First thing would be if I get a motion to waive the reading of the COVID.
So moved.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next thing would be the pledge.
Reporting in progress.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first on the agenda is the minutes and the warrants. So approval of treasury warrant, 21W 27, 22W 1 and payroll 21W PW 27 and payroll 22PW 1.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, if I can get a roll call vote.
Glock aye.
Benoit aye.
Residency aye.
And Nichols aye excluding any COA wages. Uh, next on the agenda is the minutes from the June 29th meeting. Motion.
Approved as written.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Glock aye.
No discussion, roll call.
Glock aye.
Benoit aye.
Residency aye.
And Nichols aye. All right, next on the agenda is public comment. Do you have anybody in there? Okay.
Lou Carnaculi, 18, Blueberry Lane. Have you, uh, I have for no cost of the town, the ability to place down at Anderson Square.
That's on our agenda.
Yeah, we do, we have that on the agenda, Mr. Carnaculi, as an agenda item?
Okay, so.
Just, I want to make sure there's no other public comments because that is actually.
Well, I have some other things I want to talk about, that's what I want.
Okay, so that is on the agenda for discussion.
I was, I was never notified that that was going to be taped.
There was an email sent out by Beth that I saw.
If an email came out, I never got it, so.
Okay.
Maybe she had the wrong, maybe it just got through.
Okay, we'll, we'll check on that. But do you have other items that you wanted?
Yeah. The, um, I'd like to propose to the board for your consideration that the area, that large section of area there at the beginning of Central Tree Road, where you can come in from two sides and there's the open area, that that be dedicated as the Cleveland B. Blair Senior Square. The stone and the, and the, and the pole and the sign, sign is calling it a square, which have zero cost to the community, zero cost to the community. I believe it's an appropriate suggestion for the following reasons. I saw what Mr. Blair contributed to our community during the nine years that I was a selectman. This building that we're sitting in, we built it during the time that I was on the board. Mr. Blair was very instrumental. In fact, when we were having a difficulty with the heating system, how we were going to heat and cool this place off, his suggestion saved the town thousands of dollars. The DPW garage, the original plans, were going to cost the town 1.3 million dollars. The area where the work is done on the, on the trucks, et cetera, was not as big as the present building is right now. Now, we're going to be columns in it, columns, which Mr. Blair said he had some difficulty with, he was on the finance board at the time, by the way, at the meetings, because the trucks would bang into him. So he suggested that all of us selectmen take a ride out to Ocam. I went, the other two didn't go. I went as the, as a representative of the Board of Selectmen. Went out and took a look at the facility out there. Came back and reported to my fellow select board members, this was the way to go. I believe we paid only $800,000 for that building. I may be wrong, but I know it was less than what we had done before. Okay? That was just some of the many things that he has suggested, that he suggested over time, that saved this town money. That put, that, that, that had things done, that's just on the public side. Obviously, the private side, things he did at St. Patrick's Church, for those of you who may be a member, are just outstanding. I believe the gentleman should be honored in that respect. So I'm submitting that to you for your consideration. Again, zero funds. We have paid tribute to others' people prior to, uh, prior to Mr. Blair or my suggestion of Mr. Blair. People who served either in an elected position or an appointed position. He was on the finance board for many, many years. The sign, both on two ends of, of here on Palmagussin, in honoring the Alanovi brothers, were again put up by private funds approved by the Board of Selectmen. Okay? What you've done for Mr. Anderson, what's at the top of Prescott Street. So we have precedent in that respect. So I humbly suggest to you, present to you the fact, I would hope that you would consider naming it. And for the last time, so that the public knows this, it's going to cost nobody a dime in tax dollars. You have my word on that. Won't cost you a dime, okay? And it would be under your guidance. We certainly wouldn't want to circumvent the Board of Selectmen. So where the place would be, what would, where would be placed, what would be said on the plaque, those kinds of things. That was my suggestion for an example for Mr. Anderson. What do you want to put on the plaque or on the stone? So I'm glad you're taking it up tonight. I'm not going to stay for the discussion, I have something else to do. I hope to get a very positive phone call tomorrow from one of you or from your secretary saying it's a go. Well, I will get ahold of Mr. Ackerman and we can discuss how we're going to do this. I hope you're going to do it, but we'll see. Oh, one last thing, excuse me, I'm going to put my money in your way?
No, that's fine.
One last thing. My understanding is that the federal government has sent over $2 million to our town for specific things. I want to know how, have we decided what we're going to do with it? Are we going to spend this money? When are we, when are we going to launch into this? Is this a discussion item for tonight, for the future? When do you think we, the public, will understand what's going on? So that's the last of my points.
All right, but did you also want to present the other thing about Mr. Anderson tonight, was that?
Well.
I, I know you seem like you're running out, but that's on the agenda that you, that you had asked about a monument. Is that still?
Right, that's the, that's, that was the, that's what I began to speak about, yeah.
Right, I know, I just want to make sure, because you seem like you're running out, so.
Yeah, I told you, I can't stay, I have, I have.
Right, so then I'm going to ask the committee if we can take it out of order so that you can discuss it before you take it off.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
Does anybody have any objection? And, and we'll, we'll get to the other things you brought up, but I don't want you taken off before we address this other. Does anybody have any objection to taking 162 out of order? Okay, I'm sorry, so it, it's on the agenda, so if you want.
Oh, okay, so it is, okay. I thought it was a great gesture on the board to select, the, the select board to honor Ralph Anderson. Ralph and I go back a long way. I applaud you for that decision. I went down and I saw the square when I got back from Florida. I wasn't able to go to the dedicating ceremony because I wasn't in the, in the state, let alone the town. I went down there and I noticed a nice sign up top, beautiful, but there's no stone. There's a stone at the top of Prescott Street, which I go by an awful lot of times because I lived down on Blueberry Lane. So I took it upon myself to look into, see what the cost would be to have that done, to get a stone similar to the one at the top of Prescott. And also I started talking to people about fundraising to pay for it. The person I spoke to was Bob Ackerman. Bob Ackerman lives in Rutland, been here for a long, long time, known him a long, long time. In fact, his dad was our electrical inspector during my days as selectman. Nice guy. Both Ackermans are good guys. So he got back to me and he said that the company that they deal with at St. John Cemetery, there was a stone, would it be an appropriate stone, a little bit different shape than the one up there, a little bit of an angle? I said terrific, sounds good, I can present it to the Board of Selectmen. Again, what's the cost so I can start fundraising? He says it's all taken care of, donated. So what I would like to know is, A, that you will okay it and we put it up there. I don't see why there would be any problem by the state. If there is, I'll be more than happy to talk to our state rep. She's a very nice person and I know her, or our state senator, Ann Goby. So either one, Kim or Ann, to see whether that would be, if that, if that in fact becomes a problem. I looked at the monument on Prescott Street and with just a few simple words. So I think if I remember correctly, Ralph was the first full-time police chief? Okay, so something like Ralph Anderson, so-and-so, whatever, first full-time Rutland police chief. And that would be, to me, appropriate. That would be then put in either by our people or I will talk to Bob Ackerman and if there is a cost to having it put in by, by the, by the monument company, I will fundraise that money, that's not a problem. I've got two or three donors already lined up to help me defray any cost there is. That's my presentation.
All right, I mean, that's obviously something that we'd want to also discuss with the director of DPW regarding any concerns. But Ron, didn't we, we have a policy that we just put in place? Can you just kind of go through that? Because this will affect both of Mr. Carnaculi's.
Joe, I'd be happy to share with you, I don't have it in front of me, so I'm not going to be able to tell you exactly how the policy reads. But under discussion of naming of town properties in honor of people, I think it actually occurred during the Ralph Anderson discussion, the board asked to generate a policy going forward so there would be clear direction as to how we name different town properties. So there's a new policy that the board voted on that sets up a process for that. And I'd be happy to give it to you tomorrow if you want to swing by or whatever. I can tell you that it involves, the historical commission is involved in making that recommendation. The Board of Selectmen, I think then, actually makes a recommendation at town meeting. And town meeting, I think, has the final formal say on if something is going to be named after somebody in town. But I'll have to share that policy with you and that's my recollection of it, but it's not exact.
If I may, through the chair?
Yes.
Um, my understanding is that that square has already been named though. And so this is just, I think, if I'm understanding, Mr. Carnaculi properly is looking for permission to put an, a permanent stone marker there, I don't know, in addition to or in place of the, the flower.
And, and I'm sorry.
Well, the flower thing is starting to break down already.
I, truthfully, I wasn't referring to that, Leah. There was a discussion of another piece of property that Joe discussed about naming or, or, or somebody else, particularly Blair. That's what I was, that's what I, yeah, he wasn't in there.
But I was speaking specifically.
Yeah. Before you came in, he was talking about a property he wanted to name after Blair. So that's what I was referring to in the conversation.
Right now, we're talking about the Anderson one.
Yeah, but I'm telling.
Well, I, I asked him to speak on both of them as well.
I understand your policy.
So, so that's, that's the answer to one of your questions. I'll happy to share that too and I'd be happy to work with you to get that policy, you know, to get that approved through the, the right, correct way under the policy, so. I don't have anything against the project.
I guess my question would be, if I, Mr. Chairman, through, if I may, if I may, to, to the board, when did this policy get put in and why the need for such a cumbersome policy?
Well, it was put in just at the, like, one, two months ago.
About, yeah, it's like three or four months ago, not that long ago.
After a lot of discussion when the, the naming of the street, the, the square after Ralph Anderson.
Was there, if I may, was there a lot of complaints by people? And they, and the townspeople wanted to get involved in something like that?
The board just felt there should be a policy in place so that people just don't, you know, I mean, it could, it could get out of control where people would be coming up all the time with names and stuff. And we felt that there should be a policy in place so that it could be reviewed appropriately.
If I may, if I may, Mr. Chairman, if I may, it's not going to stop people from coming up here and suggesting something. What, all it's going to do is make them go through a tremendous amount of hoops, where you are the board that says yes or no. That's what you're elected to do. That's what you're elected to do. We're not asking to spend incredible sums of money. You know, the, the things for the Alanovi brothers, I paid for those. I paid for those. So it cost the town nothing, except a couple of guys putting the things in. I mean, so. It's just mind-boggling to me. But anyway, getting back to Ralph Anderson, let's deal with that.
I know Ron was on vacation and we just switched chairs. I had worked with Mr. Carnaculi, Mr. Carnaculi reached out to me about the Ralph Anderson thing. And there's also another consideration in that we have to determine that square, that piece of property at the intersection, after talking to Mr. Buckley, could be owned by the state. And the state would have its own hoops to jump through in terms of placing a permanent monument or structure on that. So we have to make sure that we're doing things the appropriate way. And that's just something else that we have to consider and deal with and be able to articulate.
Have you talked to the state yet?
I'm sorry?
Have you, has, have you, have we talked to the state yet?
It hasn't come to the board yet, this is the first night that it's on the agenda. The other issue too, if I remember the conversation we had about the policy change, was, the intent was if something like this went to town meeting, you would have a lot more people that are aware of it, that are able to support it, than if we're just making decisions and it never, the word never gets out there. I know Mr. Stillings did a tremendous job organizing that effort up at the Anderson Square. But, you know, without that effort, I'm not sure that we wouldn't have been able to have that, that kind of event. So the purpose of this is not to create more barriers, Mr. Carnaculi. It was just so we inform the town and the town can support it and come out to similar type events for these kinds of things.
Well, I guess those people, if I may, Mr. Chairman, if those people are really concerned about the discussion, if it becomes known publicly that there's a discussion to name square X after Lou Carnaculi and there'll be a, a meeting at the select boards, next meeting, there'll be a, a, a discussion area. People who are really concerned, one or another, will show up. I don't understand why it would go to a town meeting and take a valuable time at a town meeting where basically we're, we're working on, which I would consider as a former selectman, much more important situations concerning the community, a spending of our money, what projects we're going to get, involve ourselves building new buildings, et cetera. This is a simple monument, simple designation, that you could have an open meeting at, at one of your meetings, invite people in who want to come and talk. Those who are opposed can come and say I'm opposed. Those who are, I will guarantee you that you'll get maybe five or six people if you get that many. So it just seems to me to be a long-comious thing, but you know, I'm not a selectman anymore, I'm making a suggestion. I'll wait to hear about whether, hopefully we'll be able to get the monument in for Mr. Anderson before the snow flies, because I'm leaving for Florida on December 6th. And I'd like to see the thing in before I go to Florida. So hopefully we can, I don't, you know, don't put any pressure on you guys, but if we can get this supposed ball, not a snowball, but a ball, rolling so we can know what's going on. So I'm not keeping poor Mr. Ackerman, you know, dangling out there wondering what's going on, Lou.
So, Mr. Chair, if it's okay, if it's okay with the board, I'm happy to work with the DPW director. And he, you're correct, we're going to have to work through Annie and Senator Goby to see if it's possible to put the monument on state property or not. But I'm happy to, if the board doesn't object to putting a monument on that location. And I'd like to, I, I, we need to know the size of what you're doing, so a specific description of what you're trying to do so we can ask.
I'd be more than happy to.
Senator Goby, if there's no objection.
I'm not going to bother Mr. Ackerman, I'll let you to go.
I'm not against working with them to see if we can figure it out, I don't know.
Just a, just one final thing on this issue and then it's over, I don't want to talk to anyone. Well, you can, I mean, I won't bother you anymore about it. Prescott Street, is it that state property?
No.
That's town?
That's all town.
That's us?
If you don't mind me speaking out of turn, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
But, but Pleasantale is.
Pleasantale, Pleasantale is a town road, but that intersection is in, within Mass, the Mass Highway right away.
Okay.
122A.
Okay.
Do, do you want me to address the federal money?
One sec. Uh, well, what, what, do you have some kind of motion or?
The only problem is I have with that being an island, what's going to stop people from blowing into it in the winter time?
What, what's that stop people up at Prescott, uh, Prescott Street?
They don't travel that fast on that road.
Okay, all right.
I mean, I have, look, I have no objections to doing this, but somehow it's got to be protected. Or put it somewhere where it can be seen and not on that island in the middle of the road.
Does someone want to make a motion to have?
A stone on the island.
Ron work with?
I'll make a motion to have Ron and Mr. Buckley provide options back to the board on how to move this forward.
Okay. Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll, roll call?
Glock aye.
Benoit aye.
Residency aye.
Waitman aye.
And Nichols aye. So, and, and, and I don't think there's any objection to, to the, the suggestions. I think it's just, we, there's certain protocols that are now in place with the new policy. Your other question was regarding the, the additional funding, which I know that Ron has been working with the committee so he can address that to you as well.
So first, we'll just reach out to me and we'll talk and we'll figure out with Joe how to go forward with that, all right? The second issue you asked is about the federal funding. You're, you're very close to correct. We are going to receive, we already receive about $448,000 under what's called the American Rescue Plan. We're eventually going to get another payment of another $448,000. And eventually, I think we're going to see another payment of about a million three, a million four from that federal money. It can be used for certain buckets of spending. It can be used specifically for upgrading water sewer infrastructure, which is the biggest use that the town of Rutland can use it for. And that's one of the things we're, we're working on, as, as the chair said. I formed a committee of key department heads to look at those buckets and see how we could utilize money under each of those buckets to make a recommendation for Board of Selectmen for that expenditure. So as I said, one of the buckets is water sewer, another one is broadband infrastructure. So we're already working with Charter to find out if it's possible to improve our broadband, particularly down Glenwood Road to the senior center, maybe to the school and to the water department. So we're looking at that with Charter right now. Third bucket of money is for public health issues. If we wanted to use money to improve our future reaction to something like a COVID response, that we could use money for certain types of public health things and for increasing the pay if we chose to for essential workers that have already worked. In other words, if we paid people that work at the, at this building, if we wanted to, we could give them more money than we already paid them. I'm not sure we're going to get on that path, but that's one of the allowed uses. There's allowed money for housing and certain types of low-income housing, which is more directed towards city than it is for municipality like us. There's also lost, a provision for lost revenue with towns and cities' lost money as a result of COVID in terms of tax revenue. We could get money from the state to help us in that gap. In other words, if you lose money this year, in theory, you should get it next year when COVID's gone, right? I don't think we've had much, if any, of a revenue loss, but we could use it for something like that. So the bottom line is that I have a committee of key people, Joe Buckley is on it, our treasure collector Nancy Nichols is on it, police and fire chief are on it, health people, to develop some kind of plan I can bring forward for that spending to the Board of Selectmen. So that's what's going on with the federal fund.
Just one follow-up question in the list of things. For, for an example, upgrading of buildings. So let's say for an example, I'm not sure, at least during my time, we didn't have any security cameras, for an example, at the selectmen's office, that building, or the DPW building, this building. Could the money be used to upgrade security cameras?
So there is nothing for upgrading of buildings unless it was somehow specifically related to COVID-19 or our health issues, but there's nothing in it? Like, I was hoping to use some of the money for capital improvements to buildings. It's not one of the, it's not one of the buckets, no joke.
Now, do you have to come back to the town meeting to vote yes or no on the spending of the money?
I think the answer is no, I think it can be approved by the Board of Selectmen and, and to the finance committee, but I don't think it has to go to town meeting, no.
Well, it would seem to me, Mr. Chairman, $2.3 million would be the pine to come back, not a stone to honor somebody. But that's just me.
Yeah, I understand, I just don't.
How old, how old?
I just don't think the federal requirement for the money has that requirement in it. But I understand why you feel that way, Lou, but that's not part of the requirement.
And just to, so I can leave, what do I do about the, my suggestion about doing something for Mr. Blair? Do I leave it in your hands or do I write something up?
I believe if Ron was going to, Ron was going to work with you on both of those.
I'd be happy to work with you on that.
I'll work with you.
Yeah, I'll show you the policy and we can figure out how to go forward with it.
Thank you very much.
I'm happy to work with you on all those issues.
Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you.
Have a great meeting.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else for public comment?
I'm thinking, I'll.
Okay. Tim or Cameron?
It looks like Tim.
Tim?
Yep.
Tim? Can you hear us? You're on mute.
No, I'm not muted.
It looks like the mic's crossing. It has, oh, no, that's not his, it's not his, yeah.
Oh, they're both on.
Yeah.
Connected. We can move on and come back to Tim.
Well, I don't think we have anybody else waiting, do we? Just give me a couple more seconds.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I, I had a question and, and this is limited for you and for Ron. I understood that there was a, a fourth item available, if I remember Mr. Biden's speech about a, a week ago, that that money can also be used for the hiring of police officers, if I'm not mistaken. Is that a correct statement?
I've read that thing a couple of times, Tim, and I have not seen that provision. If I can look at it again, but if I was to answer you from what I read twice before I went on vacation, the answer would be no.
Okay, I thought that was a big push that he had a huge speech on the TV. But anyhow, that's fine, I, I thought that was another opportunity for Chief Monaco, so, okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, do we have anybody else for public comment? Okay, uh, next on the agenda is department heads. I know that we've had this on our agenda pretty much every, every meeting, but we've, in the past, we used to have departments have heads come in and actually talk about the departments. And I wanted to get, kind of get back on that and, and give them an opportunity to come in and kind of tell us an update on what's going on with the departments, the, the good and, and concerns. And that way, the board can hear it and ask any questions and the public also has the opportunity to hear what some of the departments are dealing with and some of the events and things that they, they have going on. So I thought that'd be a good idea to bring back. I think right now we just have DPW, Joe Buckley on, I don't think we have any department heads. And you also had an issue regarding yard waste. So, Joe, if you want to, just go ahead and.
Want me to speak from here or you might move a little closer to the front?
They can hear, we can hear you from wherever you want to sit, I think.
All right, I'll move to the front.
Joe, it does make sense for you to get closer just so they could pick up the sound and those zoom.
Sure.
They've got mics all over.
I was going to say, I can hear everything back there.
Oh, I know.
No, that's okay.
I'd like to see everybody's.
Thank you for coming.
No, I wrote some quick notes on the yard waste. So most communities in Massachusetts collect yard waste, leaves, brush, grass, liquids, and the like. Yeah, I want to say, in my original email, it was back the early 90s, Massachusetts did not want folks burning yard waste, you know, on a large scale or putting it in landfill to save landfill space. But those are both illegal in Massachusetts. They also ask that cities and towns register all their compost sites, which is something we're going to have to get to eventually. One of the things that came out of the most recent approved budget is, it's no surprise to me when you're keeping movies a little short on staff. Just before that, we started to clear up our yard because we had a large brush pile there. The fire chief had identified it as a sizable fire hazard. We had tires and steel. And what, the real motivation behind it, along with the, the fire problem, was comply with our storm order management permit. And one of the basic things for storm order management permits is DPW housekeeping. We had a lot of silt and salting runoff going off the site. We would have been definitely tagged as non-compliant. So it's a low-cost measure to clean up your yard and keep your, your stuff in working order and maintain, you know, from a storm order standpoint. And it's a, it's one of five major things you have to comply with for the federal government for storming. What we found was we had a massive brush pile. And it looked like the town, over the time, would collect brush from, you know, storm debris, folks dropping it off, clearing, clearing up trees that had fallen in the roadway. And all this was, the change we talked about doing for the yard waste was we wanted folks to come in on weekends so we can grind it up as it comes in. We don't want to have a massive pile and we don't want to have to hire somebody to come in and grind it because we don't have the equipment to do it. So the hope was have folks come in on a Saturday, a couple of times a month, drop off the yard waste. We'll grind the brush as it comes in, so we don't run the risk of getting a large pile. We do have a couple of folks who sneak in on weekends, it seems, and leave us with a couple of other things, like tires or occasionally some lumber. And I think overall, we'd end up with a cleaner operation and safer operation. But I'll open the floor to questions. I mean, it's technically a DPW policy, I don't think it needs necessarily a vote, but.
I guess my first question, Joe, would be like, when it would start and when baseball ends? Because my only concern is adding additional traffic to that roadway while, while baseball is going on, because that's a horrible area on a weekend when there's sports going on. So is that going to affect it? Is it going to, is baseball going to be over or how, how is that going to?
Well, we were hoping to do it basically April to November, April to the snowplows, because people get a lot of leaf volume, obviously. I imagine, I'm not really that concerned with the baseball. I think if we manage our site properly, we'll be all right.
Well, I guess I'm more concerned with the traffic issue because it's a nightmare right now, just with baseball.
No, it's valid. It's valid.
So if you're adding people to come in and out to right in that same space, I have a concern that you're just adding more congestion to that area. And I guess that's what my question is.
Well, it's valid and we're going to have to just try it out, see if we can't manage it, we'll have to reassess and possibly do a different day. But I want to have staff on site when that goes down.
Now, has the police chief, have you talked to him or anything?
I said this.
Fired, do they have any concerns with that area?
Yeah, I sent the police out of the gate. Because he was, the chief of police was covering for, as town administrator during the time I produced the email and I reviewed it with him before I went to you folks.
And did he, did you address the traffic issue or any of the issues on, because that's been an issue for a while?
Right. He didn't flag it at that time, but that doesn't mean I can't bring it back up with him.
And Ron, I'd like you to at least discuss that with the chief.
Yeah, we'd be happy to, yeah.
And the other thing is.
The fire chief was very happy to answer your question.
Because that's still even a fire hazard because that road is a nightmare to go through.
No, I meant the fire hazard we eliminated.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm just talking about the, you know, like I said, public safety in general with that area. Do you know how late baseball, does anybody know how late baseball goes?
Like into the season? I mean, I think they just finished around the Fourth of July with All-Stars and stuff.
Any idea what the first time of the first game is?
I was just gonna say, if you're doing mornings, I mean, I don't know off the top of my head.
Yes.
I know that they do start with morning games, but if you're doing it.
Eight to one, seven to one, that kind of thing.
And doing it a couple of times a month, I don't necessarily think it's going to be a huge run every weekend. I do think it's something definitely to be mindful of for sure because.
Okay, so Ron, in your discussions, maybe you could talk to baseball and kind of try to avoid doing things at this exact same time.
Because we have a pretty good rapport then, so I can talk to.
I just would like to avoid adding any additional congestion to that area if possible.
We'll take care of it.
And the other question is, so this is overtime money, right, that you'll have to be paying now? I know your budget is really tight, is that gonna?
When we rewrote the budget, we left, we left money in overtime simply because we knew we would be shorthanded on the tax levy operations side. So we created a snow overtime line item. If we get in trouble anyplace with overtime, it's going to be in the snow operations. And that'll have to be deficit spent.
Do we have other questions from the?
I do. You mentioned compost sites?
Yes.
What about compost sites?
Well, currently, we're composting material up at the hospital property. We're gonna, I sent an email probably a year ago, we're eventually going to have to move where we compost our material. I don't think we're in need of a massive amount of space, maybe half an acre. We're also composting at the DPW parcel behind the library and eventually I think I'd like to get out of there.
Well, I misunderstood, I guess, because I thought you said.
No, it's okay.
Private composting.
No.
Because I mean, being a farm, we compost, you know.
Oh, no, the town composts all the yard waste, the leaf and yard waste material we bring in. We're currently composting up at the hospital site, some of it on DPW property, but eventually we have to get it all out of the hospital property. I mentioned it because you can't burn or bury it.
Oh, I know.
Your options are to compost it or hire someone else to compost it for you.
Any other comments or questions on the yard waste issue?
If I may, do you, will it, having the yard drop off location for residents, will there be a fee associated with that? Or would that be a free, just bring your stuff down?
No, just bring your stuff.
Okay.
Right now, you can drop it off during the weekend. We don't have the folks around to manage it properly. I think when we were, when it was done before I got here, what would happen was folks would drop off brush and we'd just pile it up. And piling it up cost us probably close to twelve, ten thousand dollars, ten, twelve thousand dollars to get it processed and managed.
Yeah, I remember having the conversation a year or two ago about finding a way to manage it ongoing rather than letting it accumulate to a point.
Exactly.
So I'm not, I was just curious and more for people that are listening that are looking to having it as an option, that it's, even though it will be manned, it's still a free service that the town is providing, but it's going to be staffed.
Where are you putting the ground material? So now you've got brush that's ground, where are you putting that?
We mix it and we leave the yard waste and compost it. So eventually it breaks down. It takes us about a year and a half to process the material.
So for people listening, so many budget cuts for the DPW and we have a list today that we're going to look at that is talking about all of the, like, snow, you know, snow plowing, we're going to lose this, we're going to lose that. And now you're asking to spend money someplace else. So for people listening, how can you separate that and give a good reason for this? Because I look, I look at it as right now, it might be a nice to have if we're breaking and violating laws and policies.
We definitely went with the stormwater stuff, we had to clean that up. We did a lot of site work to clean that up. I think in the long term, though, frankly, if you spend the money to grind the yard waste and manage it as it comes in, you're actually safe versus piling it up and then having a bigger problem down the road. I hope that answered your question.
It does, but I also noted that as a board, we're looking at, you know, override and what, what can we be really sure that we need to do? So.
Oh, absolutely. Unfortunately, we'd have to do yard waste and yard gas. And if we don't do it, if we don't have a managed approach, it's either going to end up on the side of a road or end up in a park or something like that.
Now, one other thing you mentioned that people are dropping off improper items during the week.
Yes.
Are you putting locks on things? How are you going to stop that?
It's harder than, it's harder than it sounds for that because DPW provides fuel for both police, fire and other town offices. So it's actually a pretty busy yard. Plus the, you know, patrol officer's house back there. So there's people in and out of the yard and it's not unusual for someone to try and sneak in. We currently don't have cameras, no.
Okay, so you're still going to end up with, because Wednesday was my convenient day to do that.
Well, that's something, I think we're gonna. I think we're gonna cut it down.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Any other updates, Joe, as far as the public?
I have a couple. So there's been some, if you don't mind, I want to mention the, talk about the grant we got for the sidewalk.
That's on the agenda, but go ahead, take it, go do it.
Just briefly, the town was awarded a complete streets grant to do the sidewalk on Maple Ave. There's some confusion as to which sidewalk it was. It's Maple Ave and that's all I wanted to tell you, from the old hospital property to Main Street. It includes the removal of the elevated portion where that stone wall is currently and the walk will come down to street level. And there'll be a new retaining wall installed. There's also some crosswalk signs being installed, some bicycle lanes being striped, and I think a bicycle rack up near the post office.
Joe, on that one, that you're going to do the cunning, so there's currently, the resident on the one that's raised, there's a stairway there, isn't there? Is that being addressed?
Stairway will have to be adjusted. Yep, it's in the design.
And the resident's aware of what will happen with that?
We'll have to go over with them, but it's all within our right of way.
And what about crosswalks, anything that?
There are several crosswalks and restriping associated with them, yes. But the sidewalk itself is going to remain in the same location, sorry to interrupt you.
It's okay. Now, what about any like signage? I know that a lot of more safe, you know, like the flashing signage and stuff.
There are some of those, yes, there are a couple of those.
Because you do have a lot of seniors and stuff that go up, try to cross that road and it's extremely busy, so that's being addressed as well.
There is, some of that's in the design as well, yes.
Is there a bicycle thing in there too?
Yeah, he said bicycles.
Bicycle kind of, yeah.
No, but there are some signs, right? It's a flashing sign, you can see.
Yeah, okay.
It doesn't, it's not a signalized intersection, but there is a flashing sign associated.
Okay, now, since it ties up to Main Street, any chance you could try to throw one across there? It goes from Maple up to the end of, where it connects on Main Street, right?
Yeah, it goes from, it goes on Maple from Hospital Drive, so up to Main.
Oh, okay. Right, when you get up to Main, is there any way you can justify across Main to have access to that walkway with a flashing walkway?
I can't really change the scope.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I could, we could talk to the state.
Because that's a very dangerous area that's been, you know, a point of contention for a long, long time. So I think it's worth a conversation if there's some way that you can use some of those funds to address that area. It might be beneficial.
We can talk to the state, but like I said.
And if not, I mean, we appreciate it.
The actual scope is very finite.
And congratulations, we really appreciate the success of getting the grant. But that would be a nice to have because that, like I said, that's a big area of concern.
The, sorry to interrupt you, at, in Maple, at Main, the stepped sidewalks will remain. Because we thought those, there's some character that adds to the town, but there will be handicap access in that too.
There's the off, yeah, there's the off ramp section, yeah.
It's a, made for the chair. The roadway, Maple itself won't be extended, widened at all, it's just redoing the sidewalk, is that correct? And it's the sidewalk on the, if you're heading towards Paxton on the right side, is that to the west side?
Correct. Yes, yep.
Correct.
And.
Bicycle traffic will be, I believe, indicated to go down Sunny Side to Main because there's an existing bicycle lane on Main.
Okay.
Not in that intersection, so the bicycle lanes won't go up through.
So they'll be asked to go kind of around that intersection with Main and Maple?
Right. Yep.
Okay, that makes sense. And then I just, oh, I just wanted to thank you for doing that because I know it's been on the radar since I've been on the board and.
Thank you.
I appreciate the work that everyone has done to get us here because that sidewalk has been atrocious and there's been a lot of accidents, pedestrian accidents, people walking and falling because it hasn't been safe for a long time. So, thank you.
It's our second go around, we applied twice. We hired time bond engineers, they did the design. It's pretty thorough, I can get your copies of the drawings, I was hoping to bring one tonight, but I had a fight with the plotter.
Thank you. Is the copy of the drawings online that residents could be?
We can put them online, that's not a big deal.
I just know a lot, there's a lot of residents along there that have been in throughout the past three or four years asking about the sidewalk specifically. And so there's someplace that it can be accessed also just for our knowledge as well as any residents that are curious.
Okay. It's a, it's a big job, it's, you know, we've got almost four hundred thousand?
Three hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-three thousand.
Nine hundred eighty-three.
The total job is closer to four thirty.
You're going to use slightly a little bit of chapter ninety money.
You're going to use some chapter ninety money.
If I may, again, is there a timeframe for when it will start and estimated completion yet?
It should go out for bid this fall.
Okay.
And probably be, finish maybe a year from now.
Okay.
Okay, do you have any other questions? Do you have anything else, Joe?
I have a couple of other things. I can talk about staff changes associated with budget, but changes to the budget, but we can push that off if you want. The one I want to talk to you quick, I reviewed it with the town administrator, Mr. San Angelo, we need a set of being to do water and sewer rates.
Yeah, I talked to the chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman? I did talk to the chair about that tonight and he was aware that the rates had to be done for July thirty first, so we need a public works board. That is something we're going to discuss and move forward. But Joe, we had talked about like the nineteenth, we actually have to move much faster so that your staff would have the time to do all the paperwork necessary. So if we did that, let's say Tuesday, if we did that, no later than Monday of next week, would we be okay?
Yes.
Okay, so, does the board want to discuss trying to schedule something now?
For that meeting?
If I may, next week is when we're hoping to do the town administrative review and like goal setting stuff, right? So.
Let's just put it at the beginning of that meeting.
I was wondering if it made sense.
That's the nineteenth though, isn't it? Because I think we started, that was too late, that was one of our.
Oh, I thought you just said the nineteenth.
By Monday, by Monday.
Monday, Monday the nineteenth?
Is Monday the nineteenth?
Monday is the nineteenth.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we can do it.
This month is going.
So nineteen will work for your stuff, okay, I'm sorry. I thought nineteen was too late.
I have to move it, I have to move it, but.
Okay, so your staff can put it together by then.
Do we want to make it part of that meeting or do we want to just come like half an hour early and have a special meeting for the specific purpose?
I mean, I think it has to be posted separately because it's a board of public works meeting.
Right.
But I don't know, I mean, I feel like it deserves its own.
Right, so I'm wondering if people are able to do it like five thirty and then we'll start our other meeting at six. Is, are people able to make that kind of a time?
I can.
That's good. All right, so why don't we, we'll have.
Does everyone have the recommendation letter and?
Yeah, so you gave, I think, to Beth some of the information I wrote, just make sure with Beth she has all the information for this selectmen for that nineteenth meeting. The agenda's going to be posted, it could be to set orders for the public works board, to set order and sewer rates for fiscal year twenty-two. That's really all that has to be on the agenda for that item. They'll take that up at five thirty and then they'll move to the board meeting at six, that's all.
And it will be just for the commissioners, it won't be a board of selectmen's meeting? It'll be posted as a commission?
Thank you.
You gotta make sure.
We have to get that done.
Just make sure it's posted correctly with Beth, we'll work with you into that.
All right. And pretty much that's it for now.
Okay, don't leave because you're going to be in some of my discussions too, so.
All right, I'll hang it.
So everybody's all set with Joe? Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Before you go, Ron, unless you have an objection, I don't know. Jeff, are you only here for that one item?
Yes, sir.
Do you, does anybody object that we, since he's been waiting, that we pulled that up? I mean, it was going to be right after Ron's report anyway, so is that already the board?
I have come forward.
Okay, so why don't we, we'll discuss, this is regarding the three hundredth.
Thank you for putting this on the agenda. Jeff Stillings, Three Lord Lane, I also serve as a member of the town's three hundredth anniversary, the tricentennial committee. And I just wanted to brief the board, make sure that you are fully aware and everyone's on the same page of what our intentions are for the Friday night concerts in August. It's going to be each Friday in August at the Upper Common. Our plans are to have a center stage, almost nearly identical to what took place at the Five K Nine race. We would have Randy Jordan is going to lend us the use of his flatbed, we'll decorate it as a stage. We have four different bands which we were able to secure this week for a variety of different genres. We have a couple of food trucks, one to two food trucks per week, an ice cream truck and hopefully a beer tent in there. We'd also have a tricentennial tent where we would like to secure sponsorship for banners, for the banner program, which I believe would be the bulk of our fundraising in order to make this happen. It's going to be the sponsorship on the banners in there. So I just want to make sure that everybody is aware and that we have your full support. I do have several applications that are before you that I do ask, respectfully ask for your support and appropriate fee waivers for some of them. The first one was permission to use the common, there was a common use application that had been filed with Beth and Ron's office, assuming that we're good to go. And by the common, we're specifically requesting the Upper Common, right in front of Community Hall. There's an application for use of the town sign, as you can see, that's already been full cooperation with Mike Moriarty, putting the preliminary banner, the logo up there, saying that these are, these are coming as the bands are ready to present for that Friday. Would like to adjust a little bit coming Friday, Mynriff or the Paxton Common or the different bands that we have lined up. We would like to be able to have some freedom and adjustment for that. And most importantly, there's four applications before you requesting a pouring license on there. That would probably be one of the second most avenue of making fundraising on behalf of the three hundredth committee to be able to put something on next year. The pouring license would detail a tent by the milkroom. Milkroom is offered to provide the equipment, the beer, minus their cost, providing that we provide the staff to do that. Last week, I put myself through that TIPS training, so I am now TIPS certified. I volunteered a shift at the milkroom last week so I can learn the system. I plan to do at least one or two more shifts of volunteering in preparation for that. And we'll also probably recruit another bartender either from the Sportsman's Club or a neighboring Sportsman's Club. So that's the plan. So those applications are before you, a couple of them did indicate a fee in there with due respect, I would request because this is for a town committee and a town event, although milkroom will be providing those, it's all going to be for the benefit of the three hundredth committee. I have ventured out to try to get three porta-potties to go behind Community Hall. They recommend for every seventy-five people, one porta-party. So we're going to do three for now and adjust it accordingly. I spoke with the police chief about a detail officer, the requirement for detail, and he suggested we go the first week with one detail officer. That'll be a four hour minimum for that. The announced time will be from six until nine, it wouldn't go any later than nine because quite frankly, the bugs come out after eight. So, but we would have a detail officer for the first week and then we'll reassess to see how that goes. So that's pretty much what we have lined up, if you have any questions and if I can answer that and if you could address those applications, I would appreciate that. And lastly, we do have some seed money in the three hundredth account, which is managed through Town Hall, through Becky's office. And I believe we're up to probably twenty-five hundred. So for the bands, in order to pay the bands, I'm waiting invoices from them. Once I get the invoice, I'm going to submit them to Becky and those will go on your warrant. to Becky and those will go on your warrant for signature and that's the avenue, how we're gonna pay these bands, it's through your approval on the warrant, cut us a check and then we'll pay them that way, so you'll see that across your, your desk and that's what that is for.
So, so Jeff, the, um, the trailer and the tent and all that stuff, will that be sitting there for the month of August or is it gonna be broken down and, it's gonna be broken down and set up every week?
No, 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 it would be. Yes, broken down, set up each Friday.
Okay.
Right, so I have the Fridays off, we'll make sure that it's set up. It's gonna be, uh, almost a duplication of what you saw at the five K nine, put that in there.
I'd like, uh, through the chair, I have a couple of questions, um, about the application, and there's a lot of moving parts, um.
A few.
Yeah, uh, my concern, well, not a concern, more of a question, so the applicant is, um, you have both company, milkroom and three hundredth, which is a town organization listed, and Jeff who's obviously serving in dual roles here, no pun intended, serving both the alcohol, but also
Yep.
on the committee, um, who's legally liable if there's an issue on the common in terms of somebody that, that has one, too many, drives home, gets into an accident? Is it the town because it's a town sponsored event, or is it the milkroom under their general liability coverage? It's my understanding that when there's off premise events, that the individual company will have to provide individual policies for each day of the event to cover the instance of that, which would negate the town's insurance liability, um, which was the issue that we had talked about prior with the, uh, the bonfire and it turns out there was a uh, kind of a way to get around that and that's having the Girl Scouts sponsor the event, so the Girl Scouts are then the entity that's in charge. Um, my concern is just the insurance liability and number two, um, the question I also have is, is a hundred percent of the proceeds from the sale of the alcohol going to go to?
Three hundred.
The three hundredth, or is there going to be any ancillary benefit to the company?
They would deduct their cost, so, we're gonna do cans, so if it costs a dollar to make a can and we sell it for two dollars, then the profit to the three hundredth will be one dollar.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we don't run into any procurement issues because I don't think we've approached any other uh, businesses or breweries that might wanna co-sponsor this event, it's just, I love the idea, just my concern is just the legal entanglement between the two.
Yep. So the question, I guess, is it a procurement if it's a donation? Um, we're not soliciting them to, uh, you know, to be a vendor.
Now, I, I noticed there is a, a policy in here, Jeff, that you've included in the package, so that, for the milkroom, so is that what would cover the liability, what you?
No, if it's in there, it's because the application was given to me.
No, it only covers, this policy is a general policy that the milkroom has for their facility. This wouldn't cover any activities that took place outside of the facility on another parcel of property.
Okay. So, what I would request or su- or suggest is that we have the exact same thing that happened at the five K nine when Seven Saws came in and did their booth.
Do you know how that was handled then?
No, truth.
And that was at the school.
Truthfully, I don't, I'm, I've gotta admit that I would want to talk with Becky. So town has general liability insurance for whatever happens on town property, but alcohol is a special use
Mm-hmm.
and a lot of times it is covered by the vendor who's doing it here, but this is complicated because it's a town sponsored event. So truthfully, I would want to review this with our insurance company first to see what they think, I'm not comfortable making that decision.
So when you were on vacation through the chair, this came up as, uh, the bonfire, the issue was raised. Um, technically on all the marketing materials, the three hundredth committee did not sponsor the bonfire, it was to raise proceeds for? And that was a legal distinction.
And it was not on town property either.
Um, and the Girl Scouts, the Girl Scouts were sponsoring it, so any issues that would have occurred um, would have first been either covered by their liability or the milkrooms as it occurred on premise.
Right.
So I just wanna make sure that if something were to happen in any one of these one day events, it doesn't come back and it, it comes through our insurance policy.
And, and to, to that end, I'm not sure of that answer, so I don't wanna give an answer that I'm not a hundred percent sure on because it is a questionable liability issue and I don't have a direct answer, so I'd rather check it before, before responding.
Jeff, do you have?
Well, the answer would lie simply in the past precedents, exactly what we used for the, uh, food truck festival on Memorial Field
I was just gonna ask.
when the fire brigade ran, the fire brigade ran the beer tent, uh, so I would suggest we use the same and the same that was used for the five K nine.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, so, so Jeff, with all respect, I don't know if that was reviewed with our insurance company or with legal counsel or any of that during that time because I wasn't here.
Okay.
So I don't know if that really makes, I don't wanna use a precedent that I don't know was really checked out before. So it wouldn't take me long tomorrow to call the insurance company to find out about that and I could give you the board a better answer right away, but off the top of my head, I'm just a little cautious, I'd like to know that answer before I say yes.
Which is also the reason why I wanted to get on the agenda, to make sure that we're all on the same page and that everything's smooth.
Yep.
Before we go committing, uh, resources, if there's going to be pushback, uh, of things, we need to get that up front so that we can go ahead.
I would, I would say.
Put on these public concerts.
I would say, Mr. Chairman, this, you know, these kind of beer events happen on town properties all the time.
All the time.
So this happened, this is not a unique situation, I just wanna check the insurance coverage, but this is not some unique thing.
I just need to make sure. Okay, um, I guess, Karen, Karen, you have, you have a question?
Oh, uh, women, it's Tim, I was gonna, because I was directly in charge of the, uh, the beer tent for the fire brigade, I can, I can give you, again, to Ron's point, I, I, it didn't, it went through, uh, Mike Nichols at the time and the Nicholson, the requirement was is that the, the fire brigade had a, a general liability policy and we had to take out a one day, uh, coverage and we had to, uh, provide the insurance from Seven Saws and I apologize, I forget the second one, Flying Rhino. So we had to basically have sort of a, a, a one day, call it liquor safety clause in our, uh, our general liability appearance, and Ron, that might go to something the town might have to do.
Well, the, the other question, Tim, I had is often towns will make that coverage so that the town is an additional insured under your policy.
Well, that's what we did, Ron, with, with, with Flying Rhino and Seven Saws, they signed us on to both of their policies.
It wasn't addition, okay.
But it's also, Tim, correct if I'm wrong, but the fire brigade is a private nonprofit, right, that, that wouldn't, so we're talking about the distinction here between the three hundredth and the milkroom. Um, and you're correct in that you would have had to provide a one day insurance policy for the event. The issue is, one, we don't have that, and two,
Correct.
who's responsible for it, is it the three hundredth committee, which is also a function of the town, or the milkroom? Um, my only question, and I fully support this, I think this is a great idea, I think the fourth went off fantastic. Um, it's more just, it's our job to protect the financial liability of the town, we really just have to make sure we're doing that.
Mitch, I, I agree, I just wanted to give you what we went through because I was in the same situation you had, I was all about protecting the fire brigade. Because initially I was told, don't worry about it, you just get their liability insurance, and I talked to Peter Conde and Peter goes, you could go that way or you could be safe, and I went with the three hundred fifty dollars safe, uh, net, so. Again, that was just our experience at the fire brigade and at the September eighteenth food truck, we'll probably be, uh, approaching it the same way too, with the beer tent.
Yeah, what are you gonna do for the coming food?
Karen, Karen, you have, you have a comment? Karen.
Sorry.
Um, a few things actually, Venmo, kind of off track, but I've been hearing people wanna donate, but they don't wanna use PayPal or go in and do a uni pay, so how can we do a Venmo, first of all, for that?
I'd refer you to Sheila Dip because that's way over my head, uh, at all.
Okay. Okay, um, the other, one other thing, um, policies and insurance, everything can change overnight, I would suggest even going forward that every time we have something like this, we check, not what we did,
Yeah.
but let's check, because things could change and we would be held, and one more thing.
Yeah.
Does the, um, police department know when they scheduled one for detail, that they know about the, the beer tent and all of that?
Oh, yes.
Are you still comfortable with one? Okay.
The chief will be there.
Okay.
Yes, um, can I inquire what the plan is for the September eighteenth food truck festival?
So, the question on that is we have to look at the insurance too. Um, the, under that, they were not selling liquor, which is always a huge liability issue, but the, but the firemen in the past have, have done liquor, so that question was not dealt with before I left because we hadn't even determined if the firemen were gonna do it at that point. So we are gonna have to look at that issue, if so, we're gonna have to look at the same insurance requirement for the fire brigade or whatever the, the name of that group is.
So if you, if you could, and get back to me, because that's, that's really, uh, important, the, the precipice, I guess, of whether we're gonna be able to make money off of these functions or not.
Right.
Because otherwise we're just spending down our seed money and it really isn't, not gonna be worth, uh, putting on four concerts for the community, it, it just isn't.
Well, it would have to, if the policy has to come from the company, the town wouldn't be spending that money, the milkroom would be spending that money. We can't pay money to, the milkroom to reimburse them for a town service.
But why would, they, they? The milkroom probably wouldn't be interested in insuring, they are, and they're already going out of the, on their limb, giving us the equipment and the beer, so.
The answer is we need to talk about it tomorrow and we'll, quality insurance company will find out and we'll have a better answer tomorrow.
Yeah.
Right now, we're just guessing, so we need to get a clear explanation and we'll, and I think tomorrow by end of the day, we can figure this out.
And someone will let me know?
Yeah, just.
Because that's important, whether we wanna do this.
Yep.
So, why don't we take?
The, sorry.
Go ahead, Leah.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the other option, and it might not be enough time, is to have the three hundred form their own, um, like, friends of the three hundredth, then could put it on their private entity, but I don't think that that necessarily around the cost, you still would have the cost of insurance.
There's no time, it would take a year to get that through the.
Right.
It's not free, there's significant cost.
I know, that's, I mean, that's what I said, that it probably takes away the, the cost benefit analysis, but, yeah.
Yeah.
And I said there were hurdles in time.
Well, we'll find out tomorrow, Jeff, and we'll figure it out.
Carol?
I just think this one outstanding is you were asking to have the fee waived for the license, the permitting, so.
Yes.
We need to make sure that we address that.
So we come at this way, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay? You can do it one of two ways, right? The, the poor licenses are not before check because they gotta go through for each event and get the poor license, you gotta work with Beth for that, right?
They, they were submitted.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, so the question is, so the question is, as you approve each individual poor license, you can waive the fee
Yeah.
They were submitted quite well.
or you can just say for all events of the vice senate committee with regard to concert, then we're gonna waive the fee, either way you wanna do it.
Well, it's all in one document, so.
Do it all at one if you wanna do it all at one, it's up to you. Basically, what you're saying is, I would put a timeframe to it because this is, I think that the concept of this is for the next, what, three months or something, you're gonna do these concerts?
We're not gonna do any if, if, if.
Well, if you were to do it, right.
Three hundred and fifty dollars for a day insurance, plus a band, plus porter parties, plus a detail.
So you have four.
We're gonna nut it.
But you have four scheduled right now that you, you think you wanna go forward, four licenses?
That's up to you, yes, if, if we can get cooperation of the town, that we can do this, then we're gonna, yes.
Yeah. So we have to check insurance, but you could waive the four, all at once if you want, or individually as you approve the licenses, I would think.
I don't think we could sign the licenses if we don't have the appropriate backup documentation, I mean, we're not, we're not working against the event, the town's supportive of this, we just have to make sure from a liability perspective that we're covered.
That's what you're supposed to be working with.
So can we make a motion contingent on getting appropriate coverage, insurance coverage, or how do you wanna do this?
Um.
Because I, there is, there is gonna be a, a time.
Were you planning on approving the poor licenses tonight? Is that the agenda for approval tonight?
It's time sensitive, so I mean, I, I.
Is there a meeting between now and the first?
Yeah.
I was, if I may, I was, if I may, I was gonna say the other option was, we could put this at the start of our BOS meeting on Monday, before we.
Keep, we keep going and we're gonna have, not a selectmen meeting, we don't need that.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I was very clear with Beth that I only wanted it to be two items and it was gonna be the review item and the roundtable because,
Yeah. Yeah.
because it was a special meeting just for that purpose, so I don't want.
Right, right.
So. It's on July twenty-sixth, which is the one for the.
Yeah, we can do the twenty-sixth if that's, you think that's okay? If we put it on the agenda for the twenty-sixth, is that too close, Jeff? But.
I think you can make a contingent upon insurance, I'm okay with that.
I feel like it's, I feel like, and, I don't mean to, if I may, I don't mean to speak for Mr. Stellings in the tricentennial committee, but I feel like they kinda want answers so that they can keep planning, because to have it on the, to have the final approval on the twenty-sixth and then this first concert's the sixth, it feels very short turnaround.
Yeah, it's too.
And because.
When so much is contingent on if it's even gonna be a go, if they have the mon, if, how much money they have to expend or not, so
Right.
I feel like we need to, we need to, in good faith, we need to make every effort to show them that we want this to go forward. I think we want this to go forward, I certainly do, and the town has no money to contribute to it because we have no money, so
Right.
I, I'm a little bit struggling with, I wholly understand we need to make sure that we're protected and I also feel like it very quickly becomes a hindrance because they've been coming before us asking for the past couple of months, like, what do we need to do, what do we need to do, is this gonna be a problem, is this gonna be a problem? And now suddenly bam, it's in front of us and it's a problem.
I mean, I totally agree with Leah, I, um, we knew that, we knew that they were coming with this, so, I guess we.
It's not, it's not up to us, though, for a private business to submit the right documentation.
Right, but I guess they could have gotten more guidance on, on what would the expectations would be with, what the, you know, what the insurance requirements would be or some of the expectations were when they, they had first discussions with us, I mean, I, I feel that, that we, we are on a, a little bit of a, a time limit here and I, and as long as it's contingent in covering our, you know, the town. I, I mean, I personally don't have a problem with that, it would be up to the board to make a motion on, on each of the items and, like you say, add any contingencies that are necessary.
So I'll make it clear, if I find out, if after my discussions with insurance company tomorrow that the town is not covered, then we're gonna stop the event, because we have, we can't afford to have that liability over our heads, so unless I feel the town has reasonable insurance coverage and that we can pull off this event, I'm gonna recommend, Jeff, that we can't move forward unless he finds some other, uh, other way to provide insurance, so, because I can't, I, I don't think we can risk that for the town, it, it could be significant liability if one person drives away drunk and all of a sudden we're sued, so.
Right.
We need to be prepared, protected. We have insurance, I just gotta find out if that insurance will cover this event.
The other thing, Mr. Chair, uh, regarding the time sensitivity, the band, the bands are waiting to get this locked in. You know, we have a handshake agreement at this point and waiting, if you, if it stepped back, it, it doesn't allow them to book another gig uh, for those Fridays. Um, we're lucky to get the four because we started this two months ago, a lot of them are already like the, everybody asks, when's the Midnight Riders coming? Well, they're booked, they're booked several months out and that's the issue. So it wouldn't be fair for us to have an agreement with four bands only to say, well, you know, we need to pick this to death and we're not allowed to, uh, to go forward and then, you know, do we still owe them the money that we contracted with, so. But, uh, I appreciate it, I appreciate doing what you can do.
Call me tomorrow and we'll figure it out.
So, um, does anybody wanna make?
So why don't I make a motion to approve the alcoholic, um, beverage license for the one day liquor license, uh, for wine and malt beverages to be drunk on premise to Milk Room Brewing Company, Company and the three hundredth anniversary committee care of Jeff Stellings, for the four Fridays with rain dates, um, as the Saturdays. August sixth, the seventh would be the rain date, August thirteenth, the fourteenth would be the rain date. August twentieth, the twenty-first would be the rain date and August twenty-seventh with the twenty-eighth being the rain date. Um, pending the clarification on the insurance and waiving the fees as they're a nonprofit and part of the town, um, function.
I'll second with an amendment, if it's okay with the, the motioner, in that, um, I'm fine with everything with the exception that, uh, if the event is being held by a private company, that we make sure the insurance liability defaults to the private company versus the town expending any additional money for insurance coverage. I just, I don't want just clarification, we don't have anything in the budget to cover some of it.
So, so you, Mr. Chair? So, it's not the intent, intention of the town to increase your insurance for these events?
Of course.
So if, 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 if the, if the, if I find that the town's current coverage doesn't work, I'm gonna tell them that we, the town's not insured, unless I can get insurance coverage that's, that protects the town from the vendor, from the milkroom, we're not gonna go forward, so, I, I don't know that that amendment is necessary because it's just not gonna happen.
I'll revoke my amendment and just provide a second.
There's no way I'm gonna allow it if we're not.
I'll provide a second to Leah's motion.
Alright, uh, as far as discussion, now I know Leah, Leah, you had mentioned the rain dates, but on the actual license says specific dates, does that matter, Ron?
Yeah. So I would, so if I may, I included the rain dates only because on the applications themselves, they have rain, they provided rain dates for all of them, I see on the
Say again.
license itself, it's not, so that's why I included the rain dates.
How, how would that work? If we, if we sign off on the license for specific dates and they have rain dates for the next day?
I think as long as you include that in the motion, I don't see a problem with it.
Yeah, we're gonna.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah, alright. I just wanted to make sure that that didn't lock out those other dates.
And it's still, I think, still a total of four, it's not both the Friday and the Saturday or Sunday, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't lock in that date by putting it on.
Right.
No, as long as you include the add-on, the added dates, I think you're okay, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussions or questions?
If, sorry, if, to your point about the rain dates, though, I wonder if the license should be redone, just so you can show, it, it doesn't.
Yep.
No. No, just leave it long like it is, it's in the motion.
Well, that was my whole question, they said that it's fine, so, if that's okay.
Okay, no, I just specifically changing it or adding it on the license, not changing it, but adding it on the.
No, I think you're, I think it's fine.
Okay.
Alright, any other discussion? Alright, roll call, vote?
Rock, I.
Fanoid I.
Or City I.
Whitman I.
And Nichols I.
Thank you, Jeff.
So did we address everything that you had on there, Fanoid?
Fee waiver?
Yeah, they did.
The waiver was included in the motion.
That was in the motion.
Yep, so Jeff, we'll talk tomorrow and figure it out.
Um. Jeff, before you, you go, did you ever get a copy of the? Jeff, before you you go, did you ever get a copy of the evaluation for the town administrator, cause I know you were, you did not get that? That, I know.
I had, I had emailed that out, um.
Did you send it to my private, cause I don't have access to the old one.
You know, I probably sent it to your town email address, I apologize.
If you still, if you still wanna give input, cause we had, we had offered that to you prior to you um, coming off the board. So, be sure to get that to you, um, does the board feel that he should be part of the discussion or is it just we want the written evaluation or how do you want to?
I don't necessarily look to be part of the discussion, quite honestly.
I would search Joe's board. I would appreciate the input, um, so I mean, if there's something Mister Stallings would like to clarify, I mean, you're more than welcome to do that.
Okay, so so we'll get that evaluation to you and then if you can get it back to us, it will be included in our discussion.
All right, and.
And if you're looking for something to do on one Monday night next week, you can join us.
Okay, maybe, all right, thanks for putting this on the agenda.
Okay.
And if you have any questions uh, leading up to it, reach out and I'll come back and brief the board.
Well, Ron will work directly on you, with you on the insurance issue to me, so you'll know sooner than later how where it's gonna go.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right, uh, thank you, Ron, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, a variety of issues I wanna talk about, first, you know, Joe talked about the complete streets, but I wanna give great glutes to Joe, he's been working on this before I even came to town and it's, you know, one of the times often when you're rejected for a grant, you tend to go, I give up and I surrender. And in this case, Joe didn't surrender, he kept following through and ended up getting the grant, so I just wanted to thank him for his work on that. Uh, another thing that I sent out to you guys tonight is the faci- the final facilities management report, I sent it out to your board, I sent it out to the uh, um, capital equipment committee, I sent it out to the finance committee for all of your reviews. I really am very happy with the report, I've reviewed it and I've seen the work of this consultant before, so I think it it's gone really well. I wanna let you know that all the building managers, the department heads who have buildings were very involved in this report, gave their input, so everybody had a chance to bring forward any concerns they had about their particular facilities. Um, I think this will be very helpful and we'll have to take this and work it into the the five year capital plan I developed earlier.
Ron, I just have one question on on this one, it was, when this review was done, because I know it's on the, on the list as far as the um A D A compliance and we have the self evaluation transition plan, which is a complete report where it identified access. So was all of that information reviewed and considered in the maintenance of the buildings when that was reviewed?
Management plan looks at the the needs of the building, I don't know, I know that this is a.
Accessibility is at the need of the building.
Right, I know that the the people are very well aware of A D A issues, but I don't know how much they looked at the A D A issue as it relates to building, I'm gonna have to ask Todd that question. Um, I would think that they looked at that, but I I can't say for sure, cause I haven't had that conversation.
Only because part of the transition plan requires certain repairs to be done, if any repairs would be done, so I would think it would have to go hand in hand that those issues would be addressed.
Yeah, we'll have to, I'll have to tie that up with him and see, I have to review, to be honest with you. Todd, Todd Hassett is the head of the, one of the owners of the consulting company that did the facilities management plan. Todd is a long term, uh, town accountant and his partner is a long term facilities management guy, so the two of them were the key people involved in looking at each of the buildings. Um, so I'll have to ask him about that in that respect, I know that really the focus was on the needs of repairs and what the buildings actually needed, now I think naturally those things will tie into the A D A compliance naturally. Um, but he did look at all of that, the, and and frankly, the building, like I said, the building managers, be it the D P W manager was very involved in this process and went through a lot of this report for the different buildings, or be it the police or fire, all these buildings, uh, department heads were very involved, so if they had A D A issues, they could have raised them as well as part of this report. Um, so I think it's, it's a really solid report, we are gonna have to take that and meld that into the five year capital plan, cause now you're gonna have a much clearer estimate of facilities needs. Just so you know, what happens now is a department head, you know, realizes they need new HVAC system or new refer, they have no idea on how to get estimates for this stuff, right? So this helps them by giving a high level estimate of what the project might cost.
Well, a department head isn't responsible for the facility, it all goes to D P W.
Yeah, but they they end up working with Joe and asking Joe, can you get somebody to give me an estimate on this and department heads often feel that they have to be involved with this to push it forward, so, you know, Joe is a D P W director and he doesn't really have what big towns have and they have facility ma- facility managers who who take care of facility needs, we don't have that here, so kind of everything falls on Joe to take care of everything, so. Uh, this report is gonna help because it doesn't have either Joe or, you know, the police chief or library director, whoever it might be, running out trying to get estimates, uh, at least gives us a high level, I wanna be clear, though, that these estimates are not engineered estimates, they're high level estimates, they they look at the building and they give you, they don't look and say, okay, this elevator has engineering problems, that's not what this does, it looks at, okay, the eligibility, elevator was built at this day, it has a twenty year life, we're gonna need to start thinking about replacing it on year seventeen and what the cost of that would be, they're not doing the deep engineering work of every part of that building. You'll see in that report that there's all kinds of pictures and shows you what the problems are and helps to identify what these issues are. Joe has reviewed the report, uh, and I actually held it uh, just before I vacation, cause Joe wanted to take the last minute look at some of the some of the items in the report, uh, but I think you'll find it, I think everybody will find it helpful, I think the big issue really is now we have good plans, we know what's gonna be done, where do we get the money, that that's gonna be the the really fundamental issue as we move forward, Joe, you wanna comment about this before?
Um, sure, it it's a different school of thought, um, so our current model and one of the things um, in the report, when you read the executive summary, cause it's long, it's a couple hundred pages, unless you have trouble sleeping, um, but the summaries are excellent. But um, we, one of the things they call out is we've basically been remiss in taking care of the buildings and we haven't come up with a good financial plan long term. Frankly, um, it calls out our current model, which is similar to what you just described, they call me and they say, yep, we have an air conditioning problem and I look at it and I get somebody in, it's twenty five thousand dollars and then it has to go, we have to go through C I P C and then eventually we have to maybe go to a town meeting and get the money, we've done that for so long that in a lot of facilities were in trouble.
The other issue too is that everything that C I P C approves never gets funded, because there's no.
There's no funding mechanism, and I was not calling out C I P C.
No, 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 it's the process, yeah.
So, all this was intended to do was to take a more proactive approach and lay out, you know, and the next five years where you should be targeting your money for all your buildings and prioritizing some of that stuff versus reacting, a lot of our stuff is currently reacting. This is more a proactive approach, so you could start to figure out how to fund it and go forward, thank you.
Can I, can I make a comment for the chair? Um, I think a couple of weeks ago, and this is something that I think we should put on the agenda moving forward. Um, the issue that we have in in the simplest way possible is that we've been using our free cash to balance the budget every year and that's normally money that you would be able to use for capital infrastructure. Leah had made a comment, um, a couple of weeks ago, we're gonna have to take a look and have a serious discussion about town funding, how we treat it, um, and and have hard discussions about, you know, the fiscal years moving forward. Um, because this is going to be, if you look at historically, Ron, we had sat next to each other at town meeting and looking at what the watch use it request was and it was three and a half percent or something like that this year, which historically over the last ten years was the lowest amount requested and on average, it's above six percent. I fully anticipate we're gonna come into that again this year and it's gonna become another conversation that we're gonna have that's extremely difficult about how do we get these capital items funded. Um, it's not just buildings, it's also equipment and we're getting to the point as a community and I spoke on FinCom um, in my own personal role as the watch user, um, the contract negotiator for the five year agreement for the the school and the towns. It's becoming an issue of, you know, we have to make decisions where it's either fund this amount for the schools and you might have a a piece of equipment that's cut from an ambulance and you're gonna have a different health outcome depending on what ambulance you get when you call the fire department and that's entirely inappropriate, so I'm hoping that, um, you know, Leah made a comment or suggestion that we have that serious conversation and I really think we should put that on the agenda in the very near, if not immediate, future, so we can start looking at that and talking about it.
If I may through the chair, to Mitch's point, I spoke with Ron, I caught him in his like little gap between vacations about um, working with the town and it's potentially another committee, but some forming something to look at the long term financial health of the town, um, and that's kind of buy in from representation from the select board, FinCom, C I P C in members of the public, because we need, we we get the reports from the state that say we are our financial outlook for the next three to five years is not good and we need to look at this holistically and not just a here and now, but a and not not a a finger pointing blame game constantly at the district be.
It's complicated, it's it's not warranted by finger pointing, blame game.
It's a whole lot of moving pieces and just how can we as a board and as FinCom and as kind of the 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 decision makers in town communicate to our town people that this is an ongoing problem, not caused by last year, not caused by two years ago, but it's been ongoing and it's going to continue and what can we do realistically to make sure that as the town continues to grow in population, it's not gonna decrease, that we are managing this at a a a smart level and maybe that means decimating our services and that's what the town has decided, but having a true holistic.
Well, I feel the the initial discussion will probably be at the round table, cause that's a lot, the reason why we're having a round, round table is to try to talk about priorities and what
Right.
what different things we should be approaching, so I think that's a perfect example of what we should be discussing on Monday and then having follow ups as appropriate based on that that discussion.
If I may, can I make a recommendation through the chair? Um, I really think, I do agree with with um, with Leah's point, I do also wanna clarify that school funding is complicated and it's not, it's not something where I think the school is being malicious in terms of what their requests are. Um, the general nature of education's funding, that's pushing those costs up and that's not really within our control, but uh, I do wanna push back, I don't think we need another committee, I think, you know, FinCom has been actively engaged in trying to work through this issue. Um, I think when we ha- after we have that conversation, um, prior to, I know that they're all beat up from this last meeting cycle and they've met quite a bit to get these issues done, I would love to have a joint meeting with finance committee to talk about some of these things proactively, because it seems like the only time we do have joint meetings when we're fighting about the budget or trying to negotiate work back and forth and I think there's a lot of insight and a lot of concern on that board and a lot of expertise that we can leverage to kinda help guide the town's decisions on some of those things.
Right, as I said, I I can see that as being a discussion for next Monday as well and then not necessarily having a committee, but discussing the next steps and how to approach some of them.
And I'm looking at, you know, I, I think we often get so caught up in the year, like the next current year and I'm looking at that's obviously very important, but it's also important that we look at the next three, five years out that this is not a problem that we're suddenly gonna be able to free cash our way out of or or whatever it may be.
Mm-huh.
Um, so I think it's, they're very interchain, in interlocked, but I think it's a little bit of a separate piece also and I'm not sure the best way to do it, that's perfect for the round table, but I just wanted.
Mr. Chairman, there's a more immediate subject as it relates to this, is that the consultant will come and present this report in a formal way and answer any questions to the board, I think before we get into too much of the long term issues is let's let him present this report, let him answer questions.
I I think we're kinda getting a little off the track from Joseph, and 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 I do wanna get back to.
Did you see my thought on the school, the difference?
Right.
And I have one comment when you're done, I'm sorry.
So I mean, I do wanna circle back because, cause the um, self evaluation transition plan, which was generated based on state and federal laws was very clear that priorities would go towards access and any kind of repairs, so I mean, I assume both of you guys have reviewed that.
That's gonna have to go, as you say, like when we look at the, once we incorporate the two plans together.
Right, but I'm talking about what's in place currently.
But anything we look at that's an A D A issue, as you say, is gonna have to take priority in terms of funding when we can find out. For instance, if we have extra free cash, those projects should be placed as a priority.
Identified through every building, what was needed, and it does talk about that the D P W director would be the one responsible.
Yeah.
And it also refers to, um, the contact person, which was a town employee that passed away several, several years ago. So I I was not impressed with the review, but I think it's very important that it be part of this review as well and that's gonna end the I know we're gonna have a meeting and meet with Cindy and discuss it further, but that needs to be looked at much closer, because I I don't feel it was a very adequate, um.
And you may be right, I I remember looking at the report when I first came in, having a look at it, so I need to go back and review it.
And that, that was not, not, I mean, it was looked at not that long ago and Harry Johnson, like I said, passed away several, several years ago and he's listed as a contact in that, in that.
But I guess my immediate question is, for the next board of selectmen meeting, do you want me to add that to the agenda to have the consultant come in and meet with you and go through this as part of the next regular selectmen's meeting?
Um, yeah, I think that, that's fine, that's the meeting after the nineteenth, so that.
Yeah, whatever that meeting is after the nineteenth, I'll invite him to come, we'll put it on the agenda and it'll be like a half an hour kind of review.
I have, if I may through the chair, for this facility management study, was it only looking at the current existing buildings and the current space for which they're used and not the potential n- need for additional space?
If, for instance, and I don't know that what the conversation was, but my comment to the, to Todd and to his partner was, if department head suggests to you that they need a new building, you should put those comments into that report. Uh, but he was looking at how we use it and he identified in the report some buildings, buildings he feels are underutilized, for instance, town hall he felt was underutilized and stuff, so that's all in the report, uh, I don't know, I don't remember seeing about proposed new buildings.
And I, if I may, I wasn't necessarily thinking specifically new buildings, but um, where department, was it communicated to the department heads that if you foresee space being of concern in the next foreseeable however long?
Yeah.
Bring that up to the consultant specifically, because.
Department is were instructed that and as a matter of fact, I think that the fire police department, that facility was looked at in just that way.
Okay.
For the long term needs and what they might need and and I think, I again, I I read this huge report but I thought there was something there about a long term need of a new facility for police and fire, if I remember correctly. Do you remember that, Joe, I vaguely remember.
I've been talking about that for a long time.
Yeah, so I I think that department heads were allowed to tell the consultant anything they wanted to and put what they thought the needs of the buildings were, so that was a discussion between individual department heads and the team, so.
No, and I think that that's, I I'm just thinking also as we continue down the path of looking at our facilities how much investment does it make to put in some buildings that may not be able to serve a purpose that they're currently serving but may be able to serve a a a different purpose that may need to be reworked slightly differently, so.
Your perfect example is community hall, I mean, we can't use the upper floors because there's no elevator, there's no A D A compliance and it's just a waste of space.
Right, and so.
I think we need to first absorb the report and really come to an understanding, then we can talk about all of those issues, but I mean, right now, we're just getting it, so we need to to study it, look at it and then see what we think and then we can decide if we think we need to do something else, but but we gotta first understand it.
The report also talks about, sir, do you mind if I speak? It also sparks about, speaks to maintenance, cleaning and the like and and it also says we we have a drop in the bucket for those tasks as well, so.
We have a lot to work on.
It's not just, it's not just capital improvements and capital repairs, it's it's maintenance and upkeep and we're not doing that either.
So, so let me be really clear with the benefit of this report is, you know, you can't fixing, fix something until you know you have a problem. This really, for the first time, identifies all the problems and now we can analyze how we're gonna address them and how we're gonna fix them, but without this report, it's hard to move forward, cause nobody knows exactly what to do, so I think now we have an outline for what we do in the future. If we live up to it and find funding to it is our responsibility, but we can't say we didn't know anymore, it's in front of us, so.
It's a prudent use of your time.
Yeah, okay, so if I can move to some other issues?
Are you, you're all set, Joe?
The only thing I'll tell you, uh, just, just briefly.
Yeah.
The current budget, we don't fund any building in ground staff at all. Um, we don't fund any parks maintenance, we don't fund any forestry, just basic highway and we slide people in to make emergency.
Well, you have gen- janitorial.
We have janitorial staff to clean buildings, but even according to this report, we're remis, we don't have enough adequate people there either.
What about the uh, the fifteen thousand beautification, is that money all gone?
That's all gone.
Okay, and do we have a breakdown on what that was actually used for?
Yeah. Most of that went to the common and recovering the common and some landscaping work.
I do think, if I can through the chair, I mean, your staff, I had emailed you about this, um, you know, personally, a couple of weeks ago or a month ago now. Um, it surprises me that, because I mean, you know, like the kids love using the playground and it's kinda like we don't have a position funded for all the maintenance, Joe just slides people around to make sure that it gets done and I think sometimes that work goes unappreciated, so thank you for making that that happen.
Okay, I know, if you don't mind, Joe, I'm gonna move in.
Absolutely, go ahead.
We're still gonna involve you, cause we got some other issues with Joe. So as you know, there were two grants that I applied for, for the community compact, one was for the facilities management plan. So for those listening, this was all paid through for state funding developing this, but the second one was developing what's called a pavement management plan. And me and Joe recently, we had put this out for requests for proposals, me and Joe just recently, uh, reviewed all of the proposals and selected, um, Stan Tech uh, to actually develop the pavement management, so I sent out the award letter to them, the next step is they're gonna send me a draft contract and then review it, see if we need to make changes and then bring it to the board for their approval. We, me and Joe were very pleasantly surprised, because the lowest bidder uh, in our opinion was one of the top two companies that uh, gave through a proposal, so Stan Tech is excellent. I've worked with them in the past, they do very quality work, sometimes a little slower than I would like, but they do high quality work.
Big reputable.
Yeah, they're very, very reputable, they're a giant firm.
And this was a grant one?
Yeah, this is through the grant.
And how much was?
Twenty-six thousand four hundred was their bid. I think the grant was thirty grand.
Something like that.
It's like thirty grand, but thirty or forty grand. But they came in for twenty-six four. So I sent out the uh, the word letter. I drafted it. It's either gone out today or it's gone out tomorrow morning to them. And at the next meeting, I'm pretty sure I'll have a contract to sign for that. But that, well, what that does is that they use technology and they use people on the streets to evaluate all of our roads. And they will set up a plan and Joe, help me with this if I need it, a plan that looks at how we go forward with repairing and replacing roads over the long term, which is really, really critical. Now, again, this becomes a funding issue, because we only have a certain amount of chapter ninety funds. So you can have the best laid plans to do things, but you don't have the money to do it. And that's, again, another problem that we have to deal with is the the lack of appropriate funding to do road construction. Cuz that's what everybody anything angers people the most is a pothole in front of our house and in a road that's not in good condition. But again, I think the nice part here is Joe will have a good plan to work from. Uh, and his company is is widely known to be a top-line company, so I feel good about the product we'll get from them. Joe, you have any comments on that before I jump to another item?
Um, just quick, um, it it wasn't a formal bid process. It was a request for proposals. So technically, we didn't have to necessarily take the low bidder, but StanTech's proposal was excellent. Um, we talked to them by phone. Um, it just happens that their number was more reasonable. Um, the big winner for them was, they actually do more of a boots-on-the-ground survey than a formal like a electronic or a satellite-based survey. But it gives us a template to try, if you have some, if you have a street that may not be that bad, you can spend a certain amount of money and keep it for another twenty-five years versus throwing all your money at your worst roads. Um, hopefully, we'll have a better product after this. We'll get a a better plan to go forward with. And it kinda de-politicizes it. Everybody wants to fix their own street. Uh, this way, we get to put our money where we need it the most.
Yeah. All right. Moving on to the next issue, another piece of, I think, really, really good news. As you're familiar, in the past, when Michael was here, he applied for green and and I guess through the town. I don't know if he was the one that made you a green community or if it was the woman before Mike.
Margaret.
Margaret. But anyway, we are a green community and you guys applied for some green funds. And it was approved, uh, when Michael was here, and a number of projects were done. At that time, they, uh, the company came in and evaluated a whole series of different projects that could have been funded. Uh, I spent a lot of time in a variety of meetings with CMRPC to review plans that were put forward then, but were never funded. Uh, and we applied through, uh, working with CMRPC, we applied for uh, grants for a variety of different things. And we received approval of a hundred and seventy-three thousand two hundred and seventy dollars of Green Communities Fund. So we're gonna have money to do LED lighting at the library, weatherization of DPW, weatherization of the public safety building, and the community center. Uh, and then, of course, there's administrative assistance, which is part of the cost of doing all this. But I think it is great news uh, that we have here. Uh, and I think it'll be another one of those things where we're getting work done without putting local tax dollars into it. So and what this does, the good thing about this is that by putting in this weather stripping and stuff, it saves the town energy costs. So it will, eventually, it's gonna reduce our electricity bills. That's the whole process with green energy, is to put in projects that eventually lower the cost and use less energy. So that's another great piece of news. And Joe was involved to some degree with this as well, as we talked about this, so.
Skip to your.
So you just said the library lights? They already did this building. They must not must not did them all, because they had, uh, and I think they did, they must have done some, they do remember that. But I don't know, this is, that was one of the projects that was uncompleted or not finished that was in this.
Okay.
I'll check it again to make sure, but it seemed to require you being corrected. They did do lighting here, so I don't know if maybe they didn't finish it all or what what happened, but I'll check.
And it might be like a small portion of it. Might be just correcting a couple of.
That's fifty-seven grand, so it's.
These are all ID lights.
Yeah, I don't know. I will verify that, though, cuz as as you speak about it, I do recall lighting was done, but they went to put in the grant, cuz they have, they have a full report that we went over over and over again um, about the projects that weren't done. So I'll have to check it out and make sure. But I can't imagine they goofed it up, but I'll double-check it to make sure. I wanted to raise an issue with you that's gonna come to the forefront, and I talked to the chair today. We're gonna have to meet to discuss it. So as you all recall, one of the big issues during the budget meetings was the issue of non-union people not getting raises, that they would not get their COLAs. And everyone was made to understand that the only way they would get the raises is if the override passed. That goes for all non-union employees that are not contracted. Some of non-union people are contracted. So that was made clear, I made it clear to all my department heads and staff that that was the case. Uh, and it was sent out numerous department head requests. The Finance Committee and I, when we were doing our budget, you remember, we cut a number of positions like in half? The town planner's position was cut in half. There was position in the tax office and the clerk's office, it was cut in half, a number of positions. Well, when we got the school money back and they cut the school money, we put some of those positions back in, right? But when we did it, we put it back in where the COLAs in it. We didn't reduce the COLA out of those salaries. We just refunded the positions. So there's like seven different positions where it's in the town budget, the funding for the COLAs. So in theory, there's budgeted money for some non-union position to get raises. And a number of employees, oh, well, it's budgeted, you know, we should get our raise. And the answer is no. I cannot treat one union employee, you know, non-union employee one way and another non-union employee another way. I can't give a raise to the town planner and not give it to the billing inspector. It's gotta be consistent across all my non-union staff, even if the money is in the budget. So we had to do payroll certifications. The town treasurer collector had brought for the pedigree. And I instructed all my department heads that even if there's money in your budget for for individual raises, is you can't put it in your payroll certification. I'm not giving raises to just a few individuals that would cause havoc among all my departments if I did that. The comment I made to them, and I think s- I think you guys are aware of it, that as you remember, there was an amendment by Velu, who was here tonight, to add the money back in at town meeting for union, non-union people. And that motion went down. But me and Karen suggested that depending upon free cash, that's one of the issues we'll look at for special town meeting, if we can put in money for the COLAs or not, potentially make them retroactive. We can't guarantee that. We have to look at what the situation is with free cash. We have to look at what the Board of Selectmen wants to do at that time, what town meeting wants to do. But that's something me and Karen were at least open to seeing if we could resolve that issue, cuz we we all don't like the fact that everybody got raises of a certain non-union positions, okay? What was raised out of that, was raised to me in the last day since I've been back, is the issue of non-union call firefighters who are non-union. As you remember, we had the sheet of non-union employees. They were never considered as part of the non-union employees, the call firefighters. Cuz I guess that over the history of running, they've never been treated with a non-union employee class. So the fire chief, under the strong fire chief provision in state law, is recommending raises for those non-union call firefighters. The provision under the strong fire chief provision says, he has the power to do that, subject to approval of the Board of Selectmen. So the issue has to be brought back to the Board of Selectmen for your consideration, if you wanna do that or not, and separate them and give those certain non-union employees a raise or not, which, as you know, and I know, it opens up even more of a can of worms about this. But that's the way the law raised. So I asked the chair today that at the next town, the next selectmen's meeting, that we're gonna have to put that on the agenda for discussion. Uh, because it it really comes under your purview if you wanna approve that or not. I particularly am not fond of it because of that can of worms. I don't know how to explain. By one person gets the other, the person gets, it just makes it much more complicated. But that, frankly, at the end of the day, comes to your decision. Uh, I do wanna, I want you to make it aware of it, cuz I know it's already percolating and employees are talking to selectmen already. So you need to understand the problem I have. And I don't even know that it wouldn't be a discrimination issue if I gave a raise to one person, not the other person. I think you can get into some labor issues, legal issues. I haven't thought that would worry you, but it would concern me that 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 could cause me some labor problems, legal labor problems, not just crazy problems.
I have a couple of questions, if I may. Um, so if we take into consideration the positions that were made whole, that included the the COLA raises,
Mm-hmm.
um, do you know the number of non-union employee, non-union, non-contracted employees that if we exclude those that were made whole with the COLA, the number of employees that we would be looking at?
I have a list of that in my desk, but I don't have it.
I'm not looking for names. I'm just, I just am interested in the numbers and a dollar amount. And then for the non-union, um, call firefighters, what, how that breaks down in funding, did, was, did fire budget for those to be COLA increased and was that budget approved? You you, those are my questions.
So it's interesting in this way. I, first of all, I don't have the number with me tonight, but I have it on my desk, cuz cuz it was provided me by the treasurer collector. And that, although that list does not include the the call firefighters, right? So as part of the budget cuts, the fire chief reduced his amount of call firefighters to save money. That was part of the budget cut.
Right.
I don't know if those call guys were coming into fires or not anyway, you know what I mean? But he did cut that from his budget. So the remaining people, supposedly in his budget, there's enough of the raises that he wants to give in his budget lineup. So he says the money is there in his budget that he could give the remaining people the COLA adjustment. I can get the if direct amount for you and give it to the board. Um, now, the good thing about this, in theory, is that because some of these positions are already in the budget, for instance, the the fireman, uh, qualifier men, these seven people there, so that were given, that money was put in the budget, that when we go to town meeting, special town meeting, the amount we're gonna need to fully fund giving COLAs to all the non-union employees is gonna be less, cuz there's already money in the budget for this stuff. So that's, the good news is that when we go to solve this, we won't need as much money, because some of this has already been funded truthfully by mistake. And and I take responsibility for part of that, because we put the money back in, we didn't even think about the COLAs when we put those positions back in. Uh, so it was sort of a joint mistake of all of us just not catching that. We were so eager to get the positions back, we didn't think about the COLA part of it. So anyway, i- is it gonna become an issue? We'll put it on the next selectmen's agenda and we can discuss it. And what I'll do is for that agenda, I'll have all of those numbers for you. So it'll be part of your documentation for the next meeting. Does that make sense? Okay.
Thank you.
So that, I think I think that's all of mine. The only other, well, the impact of the budget, I wanna talk with Joe. So I'm gonna do complacency for a minute, and that goes to conversations I've had with with the chair. Um, the chair raised the issues of the ADA compliance with me. And I had looked at it, and actually, I think he asked me a question some time ago, and I told him that, yes, we had the documents that he talked about, but I have not studied them thoroughly. Um, Cindy Percille, I think is her last name, is gonna be our new ADA person. Uh, I told the chair, as we discussed this, that I was gonna loop her into the conversation about the facilities management report. So I sent her tonight, before I came to the meeting, I sent her the link for the facility management report as well. Uh, we also made a copy of all the documents that we did have, the evaluation and stuff, and and gave her copies of that as well. So it's my intention to continue to work with her, to look at any ADA issues that we might still have. I think if we, I think if we had one that we weren't meeting ADA compliance, I think the state would have already been talking to me by now. But so I don't know if there's any potential violation at this moment, but I need to look at it.
Oh, no, there are. Yeah, and I mean, you kinda get grandfathered into some of the stuff, but.
Let me look at that. I don't wanna talk about that publicly.
Well, that's when you get involved, and if you do any repair, you have to bring up.
But if we do repair, we have to bring up the speed. I just don't know if we don't do a repair right now.
You have to identify it, and you need to have a reasonable plan of when you're going to correct it. And that's all in in that report.
Yeah, so we, I gotta look at that report.
Um, and then this board also had voted that Cindy would be consulting on any um, work done to any of the access to any buildings.
Which is, which is fine. And I'll include it in a second. I mean, I asked her today, I said, when she has free time to make an appointment with Beth and me, and we can sit down and talk about it, and we'll go through it with her and and start making sure that we're in compliance. And and as as the chair said, we have to make those if we are out of compliance, we need to make they make those the top of our priority for any capital improvement project in the future.
And it's not just buildings.
Yeah, yeah, I was.
It's everything.
Could be everything.
So it's access to all services, it's it's websites, it's um, equal opportunities, it's supposed to be certain um disclosures on letters and things.
Well, that should be in the evaluation report, right? That should be in the evaluation report that was done. I'll have to look at it.
Um, yeah, you'll have to look at it.
Yeah, I'll have to look at it. It's not, I I don't know. You know, they think you, some people weren't happy with that report, but I'll.
We brought it up at our open space um, and recreation uh, committee meeting also, because I think part of that policy or um, plan is to identify um, access- accessibility to our open space and recreation also. So I think we'll be reaching out to Cindy on that side of things also, just.
Okay. So my my part of the tonight's meeting is longer than it normally is.
I think I think Carol had the time.
I I do, and I was just trying to find it. I came across a a grant application from, I wanna say, twenty nineteen for about nine hundred thousand dollars for the, uh, an elevator in
Town, the community hall.
Town Hall.
It was, as I recall, when I last looked at.
I don't know what came of it. It's just I saw the grant.
But when I recall, when I look, last looked at ADA compliance, is you could apply money to do the evaluation that we already have in place. So you can first apply it for that. And then letters that were sent said that you can apply for an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make buildings compliant. So there is grant money out there for compliance issues that we can apply for.
Yeah.
There was a two phases, one for the report and the study, and then another one for actual work.
So like that's through the Mass Office of Disability.
Yeah, that's right.
And those grant opportunities, first, they make you, and Linda knows this too, you have to get the uh, transition plan. And then there's a big pool of money that every community in Massachusetts is eligible to apply for. Um, you can apply for more up to three projects, I think, per municipality per year or it's every other year. Um, the problem we run into with a lot of our grant applications is that the state sometimes weighs communities based on demographics, income issues, things like that. We're largely non-competitive for those applications. For example, we run into that issue with block grant funding, which, as Joe knows, coming from an entitlement community, you can solve a lot of these problems with block grant funding.
CDBG, yeah.
We're pretty much, we're, even if we wrote the most perfect application in the world, we would still score lower than two-thirds of the other communities that apply, simply because of those added points. Um, and that's what explains why some of these larger projects a lot of times don't get funded.
Well, just so you know, Carol, they had, what I said, there's something called mini grant, uh, mini entitlement grant town. So like, for instance, the town I came from, automatically every year, got a certain eight hundred and something thousand dollars of CDBG block funds. It was automatic. They didn't have to they didn't, they knew they were getting it, they just had to figure out how they were gonna spend it effectively. Because we're so small, we don't have the demographics, so we don't get automatic anything. We can apply individually. And even as we do, it's very difficult to donate. It's really designed for housing issues and although they do, what I would like it for, they do it for like fixing up parks and playgrounds and stuff. So there's some uses we could do. They do it for economic development, for improving downtown environments, but it's, like you said, I I could be honest, I haven't spent a lot of time trying to get a grant, cuz I think Mitch is right. I think the odds of getting a grant are really low, but.
We look at that extensively, um, particularly when when Margaret, uh, when she was transitioning out. I mean, I remember having these conversations with the HCD and with HUD, and it's just it's almost impossible to get that access to that money.
Yeah, I just saw the grant application and didn't know what it was.
Well, it was it was also part of the um, the the accessibility review. They talk about the one elevator.
I sent you the information too, at least right now, the woods building repair for the roof and the money for the uh, prison camps was passed in the budget. So that was good, that she was able to hold it through the House. She had told me she got it through the Senate. And she was kinda holding her breath to see if it would be approved by the House. It was. So she believes that we'll get the money in the fall possibly. Now, the, in theory, the governor could veto it. But she thinks, even if that occurs, they have a good chance to override the governor's veto. So she felt pretty good that we should get the money for those two projects, so.
Great.
I think they, I don't think we get any money on the prison thing. That's, I don't know how that works, cuz that's for the, I imagine, for department, state property, so they would have to spend that money. I don't, I don't know exactly how that works. But she, but Senator Gobi put it in, so I'll have to ask her how that was.
Thank you to her and the Historical Society and everybody for kind of putting the pressure on and and getting that through, because that's a huge relief for, you know, the woods building.
We've been talking about, I've been talking about this with Senator Gobi for months. The, not the, not the uh, the camp issue, but the the Woods House. Because she originally recommended to the State Historical Society and stuff, and that just fell apart. Remember, we had a lot of conversation about that, and they wanted to put permanent restrictions on the building and everything else. So we didn't get on that path. But this time, so Gobi, when we found out, when I told her that wasn't the path, she did this new path. So com- comments to both her and Kim for for working is true, so that's good. All right. The last, the last thing that's okay, it was put on for me to speak about, and I wanted Joe to stay here too, because I think uh, you know, we had a lot of discussion about this prior to the budget being approved and, you know, for the overriding on that question is, what is the impact of the effectively three hundred thousand dollars of cuts that had to be made uh, to the budget uh, because of the the budget process in order to save money? And I was asked as to, uh, you know, what's the impact on the town. I'm not gonna go through all the smaller ones, but I do wanna talk about some of the bigger ones, if it's okay.
Well, Ron, the reason I wanted to to have it addressed is I just, and the also, I wanted the departments to be coming in, talking to us, so that I mean, this is what they, they're in, they envisioned the impact was gonna be. Obviously, departments will compensate and do certain things, or it might have a greater impact than they anticipated. So I wanted to make sure it was on our radar, that we were kind of following what was happening in the departments based on these cuts.
Do you want me to talk about a couple of key ones now or no?
Through the chair, can I make a request? Um, this document that's prepared, I know that there was a lot that was put online prior to the vote, but can we put this up on the town website?
This was on the town website. This one, this is the, this is the five hundred thousand dollar one.
Yeah.
Is it still up?
The one you have now, the Finance Committee never changed it to the three hundred thousand dollar one. But I I just, because I know what was put back in, I could go rattle through some of the key ones. But the, this is the five hundred thousand dollars. It was after the budget process done, taken out, cuz there was no need for it. I mean, we could put it back up, but uh, again, it's, this is only accurate to the five hundred, not to the three hundred.
Well, to Mitch's point, though, I think it is important to um, residents to kinda understand what what services work. Well, to Mitch's point though, I think it is important to um residents to kinda understand what what services were gonna be cut and what kinda limitations there are, so.
I was just gonna say, so when people start visually or having their services impacted negatively. It's there that they can see, we can see, everyone can see that this is a direct result of of the budget situation.
Yeah, it's also a testament to how hard our employees work and how hard FinCom worked to kind of adjust to where it is and. I know it's not a healthy place, but at least it's a place where we still have the lights on.
I thought there was a revised one to the other, um for the town meeting.
I thought that they did one too to lower the three hundred grand, but.
But they certainly were were prepared to report, so there's gotta be something there, so if you can check on that and and we can post something to.
So I have to check with finance committee, cause Anita, I asked Anita for that one too, thinking there was one for three hundred grand. And she said, no, she never got one for the three hundred, only the five hundred, but I thought that the finance committee worked on the three hundred thousand dollar one.
Yeah, so it it has to exist, so and if we can get that posted, just so.
Okay, do you want me to comment about any of this, or you just?
Through the chair, I have to leave. I'm gonna read you my book.
Do you want me to comment about any of this tonight, or you wanna just?
If you wanna do the the most significant concerns, we can do that.
And that's why I wanted Joe to stay, because one of the biggest concerns I quite frankly have is the highway department, that's that's one of my biggest concerns, as you know. We moved one and a half workers to water and sewer and make no mistake about that, that increases our costs in the water sewer area. But moving one and a half workers in theory from DPW to to water sewer is gonna have an impact on Joe's department.
So I guess I'd have to ask why, why would we do that, cause we could have hired in water and sewer, right? So we we we.
Because we needed the savings and the cuts from.
Tax levy.
From the town budget, that's why it was cut. So Joe said, instead of eliminating those people, since we need people in water sewer, let's just move those people over there. Because we had to cut from the general fund budget to get down the numbers.
Well, you didn't have to cut people, you could have looked at other cuts, so.
I seriously did take a vote, do you mind if I speak during?
Yeah, no, that's why I wanted you to wait.
So, just to review, there was a half a million cuts.
Yep.
Schools came back and dropped it how much?
About three hundred grand if I remember, no, two, two eighty six or something, I forget exactly.
After those cuts came back, uh there were no adjustments made from the original half a million cut to DPW. So we didn't recover any of those funds, a hundred and ten thousand dollars was cut out of the DPW budget on the tax side. When I walked into the meeting, what I was told was, this was done because you can deficit spend snow and ice and you have room in your enterprise. Um I'll be frank with you, if I I I reviewed the tax per budget extensively, I don't think it could have been cut from some of the location.
I mean, cause I mean, that's, that's where it ended up being a problem, because they we, they made sure that they restated any employees that were gonna be cut. And you didn't have any employees that were gonna be cut because you transferred employees.
But I cut ours out of the tax levy side, and I was told that they could not put any money back in DPW.
Right, because they would, they, the the priority was to reinstate any employees that were were gonna be laid off.
On their job, right.
Right. My other concern is, I mean, when you did that, you increased the expenses in the water and sewer, which was gonna increase rates.
Mm-hmm.
So wouldn't that some be some the commission should have re- reviewed to say, do we want to be putting this expense on the water and sewer users?
So, so the answer is that's gonna be part of the water and sewer rate discussion you guys have upcoming. And if you guys choose to, I guess you could choose to cut that, but the the problem Joe had is that we were severely understaffed in water and sewer in the first place, so.
We have ample documentation of that.
I guess my thoughts were that if you, if you were gonna hire somebody in water and sewer, you had the ability to do that and increase rates, right, later. But what you did is, what we did is we ended up short cutting the DPW.
I couldn't increase rates later, because I'd have to increase rates in advance to have the funds in place to hire.
Right, but you could have had the positions that were vacant as part of your budget, right, correct?
I I don't know if I follow your, the the thought process or something.
The position, you needed positions in the water and sewer, they were there.
They were there, they were, yes.
So you you could have had salary lines to fill those positions as part of your budget, because you needed those operators to operate the water and sewer, correct?
We need operators, yes. But historic, I I guess I explained it wrong. So historically, what was done was to keep water and sewer rates down, they would take a full, take a full-time DPW employee. Fund half of it in water and sewer and half of it in highway, so that person could be, have dual jobs. What we basically did to comply with the budget cuts that were put mandated on us was we said, okay, we can no longer use tax levy personnel to subsidize water and sewer. That's basically what we, that was the argument.
Well, those were getting come, but coming back in indirect costs anyway, weren't they?
Say that again, please?
Wasn't it coming back in indirect cost, so when they were going over and doing water and sewer, it was supposed to be.
What we ended up.
The town wasn't supposed to pay for that time.
We tried to split their time, basically.
Right, but if if they split their time, it still should have come out of water and sewer.
No, what we did was, what do you?
It comes back as indirect cost, so if they were spending time.
No, because then what the the town had done historically was only fund half of the, half of, half of the payroll was funded on. So when you look at the sewer budget over the last five years, you had two part-time employees running the sewer department for the entire town.
Right.
For water, it's it's similar, you had part-time employees helping you run water.
Okay, he's he's asking though, he's correcting, there's, there's um costs that are assigned accounting wise. To um. To the DPW department from the sewer costs, they're called indirect costs, and that's what he's trying to say, were those staff positions funded back through indirect costs from?
No, the only indirect.
I think your answer is no, but that's what he's asking.
The answer is no, the only indirect costs for water and sewer are mine, are myself.
Your secretary too, right?
No, the secretaries are listed in the budget, some of it's mine and some of it's um the treasurers and some of it's legal fees.
I I guess my concern in in the way that we did it is that you you could have listed, even though they are vacant positions in the water and sewer in the budget with the finance committee, say that these positions need to be filled. And it could have been part of your budget process and then we would be considering that with the 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 rate increases as it came. What you did is you, you depleted more staffing out of DPW and now we have more of a, more of an issue in DPW that we can't address. And what what I really had a concern was with, when we started the budget budget process, we cut all the budgets prior to even getting into the whole debate. So we cut the budgets, we end up doing an override, so people were, if if the override had passed, we would have been increasing their taxes. The services would have already been somewhat cut, because we had already cut the budgets prior to even the override. So all, the override was not covering all of the needs of of the of the departments.
Were you talking about the five hundred thousand, I think it was?
I'm talking that the budget that was presented, you would, there'd already been some cuts in departments before they even came to the finance.
Oh, you're talking about, you're talking about the cuts that I made directly with the.
Right, so I'm saying there was cuts to departments.
Yeah.
We were doing an override to increase taxes and on top of that, which people weren't gonna be aware of, is we were gonna increase their water and sewer rates. So they were gonna be paying a lot more for a lot less and I don't think that was completely understood.
Well, they're gonna get, they're gonna get, in theory, they're gonna get more in the water and sewer, because they're gonna have more staff dedicated to water and sewer than they had, right? So they're gonna get more for, you're right, there's gonna be an increased water sewer, but they're gonna get more because they're gonna have more staff, right? Cause that staff is now in.
What do you mean, how are they gonna get more, they're still gonna get to just get their water and sewer.
Yeah, but they're gonna have, the staff is gonna be paying the system, so. I guess you're not subsidizing it.
How do we not raise rates, we just spent forty five thousand dollars on a rate study to say that we didn't do it right for the last decade. So you have to raise rates as part of the natural progression of things.
Right, but I'm saying we have to inc- increase rates additionally, because we've put more staff in there by transferring them over from DPW.
Well, they look at, yeah, but we shouldn't have split positions in those functions anyway.
And.
Because you have people that aren't even using the water sewer and, yes, I know that on paper, those positions are split, but you still have spillover in terms of fringe, in terms of. Time and effort and all sorts of things like that.
Well, all that's supposed to be captured in indirect costs, I mean, that that shouldn't really be happening, any expenses that are related to water and sewer should be supported by the water and sewer.
It seems like if the DPW positions were put full back in, under highway, we would still have had to make significant additional cuts. Because my understanding was the, the two hundred thousand, a hundred and ninety some thousand that was the savings from the school was able to put back. Most of the positions that had been cut otherwise, so in order.
No, I don't think Joe got anybody back.
No, 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 no.
He didn't, right, cause he didn't, he didn't, he wasn't laying any layoffs.
Right, he didn't lose, like, town, people that work for the town are still working for, are still employees of the town. He didn't have to cut them, although they shifted.
Mm-hmm.
If they went, if they stayed under DPW, I don't think that there was, would have been a, there would have been, had to have been other cuts elsewhere throughout the budget to fund that. With the hundred and ninety, three thousand dollars.
Or they might have had to go too, I mean, I don't know.
And somebody would have gone, yeah.
Right.
Well, I mean, that was the priority when the money came back, was to reinstate any kind, any, any layoffs, any staff.
And so I think in a way, in a way to save staff, it was to shift to positions that need to be filled in in truth as. So.
Well, I guess, like I said, my concern was that it was really affecting set in several different ways.
Well, that's what truthfully of all the departments and the impacts, this is the one that bothered me the most, especially when this was going on through the finance committee. When they were first talking about, they were talking about eliminating, almost completely eliminating snow and ice money, which you may enjoy a lot of discussions about the debt. I don't think by state law, we're even allowed to do that, but it got freaky because the original thought was, oh, with snow and ice can be deficit spent, we can just cut all that money in. And deficit spending, we were like, no, you know, but it was, it was a lot of, DPW, I think, was the most complicated conversations and things. Decisions that were made were not, not as good as I think maybe decisions might have been made in other departments, trying to be nice in the way I'm saying it, but.
So I mean, I, like I said, I just wanted to make those few points, and we're gonna obviously discuss water and sewer more in depth when we look at the rates, but those are my concerns.
And I.
If if I could just speak to water and sewer very briefly, but similar to what Mr. Riscini said. Yes, we are supposed to raise rates every year, that's what came out of the recommendation, we spent forty six thousand dollars. We're supposed to raise water and sewer rates every year to avoid um financing problems which we've had in the past. We kept the water and sewer budget, uh water and sewer rates flatlined or the same all throughout the pandemic. So we'd have to raise rates this go around no matter what. Um honestly, when I look at all the numbers based on increased sales and some other things we've done, I don't think moving the staff is a big piece of that budget. Your big pieces of that budget are gonna be operating the water filtration plant, because we have problems there. And um transporting wastewater down through Worcester, those are your big charges, not, and that's really what drives your, the rate, even with the people back on board. Um I commissioned Weston Sampson to do a study of the sewer division before the budget stuff started. Uh to see what we had for adequate staff, because we had committed to DEP to um operate our sewer system to state standard. So that we could get more water out of Muscat Park Pond. Um one of the things Weston Sampson came back and said to me was, you're, you could have four people on and you have two part-time people on. Um there was no problem with bringing that staff, in my head, bringing that staff up to two people. We did the best we could with what we had.
Yeah.
Uh, snow and ice, I I'm gonna tell you, um, we've got some things in the pipeline to try and get some of those costs down, but that is another problem. And yeah, there there are, there is a state law in place that says you have to add a minimum funded for where you funded it the year previous. Um so we can't go cutting too much more out of it.
So a couple of quick things, I I, you know, the, obviously, we talked about the fact that all non-union people didn't get raises, uh the ones that were not contracted. So that's another impact, that is an impact, I think, mostly on morale and of employees and stuff and and the difference between non-union and union employees and how they're treated, so that was a major issue. The fire department, the total cut line items was about twenty nine thousand nine hundred bucks, the chief sent me a memo talking about. Uh we had a combined full-time and on-call staff of fifty-two people, twelve full-time people, forty on-call firemen. We reduced our on-call staff by sixteen as of July first. This will allow savings in fire payroll and we will be able to redistribute their gear and equipment to others as those other line items have have been cut. I'm not sure how many of the sixteen that were eliminated were actually responding to fires and different things anyway, but that was, that's the way he addressed that cut. Uh equipment, testing of equipment is repaired, required by NFPA, P A, ISO and OSHA have been eliminated. As we only have funds remaining to do any major repairs that come up during the year. Uh and he talks about what the impact on taxpayers are, he's concerned about losing the ISO fire rating for our residential commercial properties. He feels if we continue to get on his path of cutting the fire department, this will result in an eight percent increase in all homeowner insurance policies. Uh because I guess that certification has impact on your regular insurance policies for your home, uh so he addressed that concern. The police department, I I sort of found the the interesting discussion with Jeff about on-call. Because one of the major concerns the chief had is that by cutting the police overtime line, he wasn't gonna have enough on-call people to do, or on-call people to to staff. Public events like fireworks and all those things, they didn't have private duty officers to do that work. So I think that's part of, okay, Jeff, I'll give you the first night, but I'm hoping that we don't need it in the future, cause I don't have in my budget enough money to provide all these. You know, police duties for these town events that are going on, I think that is a real loss to citizens, cause I think in this town, they love those events. And not having a police officer there or making somebody else pay the cost of that police officer could become an issue.
Yeah.
Moving forward, so I think that was a a significant cut, the police, his overtime budget took a big hit. Uh there's a lot of other cuts that were, you know, professional development in my office and and different things, fees in the clerk's office and everything else, but. But those were some of the key things that I think citizens should be aware of. Uh snow plowing, I think, Joe, I don't know what you determined, but there was some question asked to, could Joe provide the snow plowing for some of the private roads that are the. Roads there, and I don't know if a decision was finally made on that, but it's it's very concerning to be able to cover all the roads and down uh with a snow budget. And you know, roads, there are some roads that where we're not required to plow that we do, uh that are deemed private roads for various reasons, so. That is an issue that is going to be looked at, I don't know if a final decision has been made, but.
That's a meeting in itself.
Yeah, so.
If, I may through the chair, for any of the private roads that may or may not be, that historically may have been plowed, but may or may not be plowed continuing. I think it's important that that communication goes out to those residents with the justice, I mean, that it's sooner rather than later. Just because historically it's happened, but we are under no legal.
Responsibility, and we will definitely notify people before that decision is made.
I I would, if we, if they can prove that we've been plowing roads, we haven't been supposed to be, you know, you get into an issue of adverse, not adverse possession, but. I don't wanna set precedent thinking they come back and say, you've been plowing this for twenty years, even though it's a private road and you're not obligated to. This sets a precedent, now you legally have to plow it.
When I wrote the DPW budget, um do you mind if I just clarify that? We were asked to come up with impact statements and that's one, we talked about no longer following the trails or no longer applying unapproved private rights of way in the town. Um there is a legal procedure for doing it, um we had to go back and verify a vote the town took in the nineteen fifties. Um all that documentation was shipped off at the time we did the budget, I'll reset it. Um and there's a procedure, it's a vote by the board and it, and you can't take that vote and take that.
Okay.
And my point is just that if it's, if it's going to have, if suddenly residents that are accustomed to having their roads plowed, aren't going to have them plowed. That communication needs to go out sooner rather than later, since they can prepare.
It'd be a nasty conversation.
And and this this discussion, this has been discussed in the past.
About the private roads, yes, for sure, but not specifically with road, yeah.
And if it ends up that it doesn't get voted, all it does is it drives your snow and ice deficit.
Yep.
Which I, not the, it's not the end of the world, but I don't know if it's necessarily the best. Practice.
I just wanted to raise it, cause I think that citizens have to know some of the things that we're looking at because of these cuts and they need to know. That, you know, this really has an impact on town services, we weren't laughing, we weren't making stuff up, it's real. So we're we're considering all of this stuff and it is painful and we hate it, but it is what it is.
And I just wanna, one thing, if I may, through the chair, that concerns me and I have had this conversation with you, Ronnie, now. Is that a lot of our budget items now are super tight and even uh even more underfunded than what they historically are. And some budget items that generally may have created free cash, not necessarily been spent to their capacity in the past, have been completely eliminated. So the amount of kind of free cash that we typically see at the end of our budget year is probably going to be even less than what it. And we generally, most of our free cash comes from outside, you know, we get grants for something that had been funded under the levy that then we don't need to pay for. Or it's through tax titles or it's not often that we have a ton of money from our budget.
So let me time you now, cause I don't want people to get confused, cause there's a couple of wild cards in that conversation, right? So you're correct in the line items that were typically, if they were overfunded or not used, I mean, we go back and that became free cash, we cut that tighter than we ever have. You're a hundred percent correct. Wild cards are things like we sold property, town properties that add free cash.
Right.
That's a one-year kind of one trend, that that'd be, the Heights property is gonna be a future wildcard, when we get revenue for that, they'll add the free cash. So I just wanna make it clear that people might see a higher free cash number because of wildcard events not relating to that. Budget issue, just so they're clear.
But it also makes it tough for us to be able, at the end of the year, to be able to do um transfers.
Yep.
Because there's, there may be less, you know, this past year, we were able to fund snow and ice deficit over line item transfers and this year, we may not. So I just wanted it to be out there that.
You're right on the money.
It's.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a tough conversation next week.
I'm on, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to highlight a few of the things, there clearly is a lot more. I'll I'll talk with the finance committee about that, if they did and then they lowered to the three hundred grand, and if so, we'll post it back up on the, on the winner internet, so they can see it. That's all I have, thank you, and I'm sorry it's long tonight, but a lot of the issues.
No, it's all right, it's a lot of stuff to just to.
Mr. Chair, if I may ask a question?
Yes.
Your crane makes way.
Your crane makes way, um, there have been discussions about cola, potential cola increases. Are step increases along with that, or are those completely off the table?
As far as I'm concerned, they're completely off the table. We're gonna have a hard enough time doing the colas, never mind step increases. So that would be my opinion as of today.
But that'd be part of a discussion with the finance committee as well, and it depends on what happens at the end of the year, what's available and where we are.
But again, the problem with that is even, you know, again, when you use free cash to fund this stuff, that's a one-time revenue. So we are building in more of a little bit of a, a future deficit, so we, I wanna keep the number as small as possible.
Thank you.
All right, and the next is the balance of the appointments. So actually, Carol and I met with Beth and kind of discussed these and, and kind of tried to develop a plan going forward. The way I'm, I'm looking at this is, I know it's not a co-chair, but I'm keeping Beth, I mean, Carol completely informed in what I'm doing. I'm having her a part of the agenda so that it's more of a, like a co-chair type of a structure, so that she, she is making decisions along with me. So it's not, there's no, you know, driven agenda for one individual, there's a little more like, uh, two people looking at the situation. So I'm, I'm working very closely with her, I've given her pretty much, and I told Beth that, you know, if there's a situation, they can't get a hold of me. She has every authority as the vice, uh, vice chair, as I, I do, and, and like I said, I'm, we're gonna try to work very closely together to try to, um, do it on a team basis without violating any kind of open, um, meeting laws because it will only be the two of us. And we, obviously, we'd never make any big decisions without the full board, but I think, um, having two people involved in the agenda and a lot of the decisions that are made quickly, um, as the chair, um, we'll be able to do that in a little bit more of a non-biased type of a situation. So anyway, Carol and I met with Beth to kind of talk about this process and, and Carol was gonna work with her on a spreadsheet and make it a lot more simplified going forward. I also told her as long as she had all the documentation and that Ron or her can certify that they got a letter from the committee and got a letter of interest, that we could run through this as a much quicker process and say, okay, they, they've got verification, I mean, that information's available if the board wants to review it. But I don't think we need to look at every email and every letter from every board unless, you know, a, a specific member wants to do that. So hopefully, we're gonna try to make that a little bit more of a smooth process because there was a lot of confusion at the, the last meeting trying to, to get these boards, um, processed. So, um, the first one we have is, is on the agricultural commission. I believe everything for the ones that are listed are here, the agricultural commission, capital improvement, um, planning committee, conservation commission, and the council on aging committee. So the, the supporting information is here, I don't know if somebody want, if anybody has any questions or if somebody wants to make a motion regarding this slate of, of appointments. Any thoughts?
Do you wanna motion, do you do it motion board by board or commission?
However, whatever you're comfortable with, if whoever wants to make the motion, they can do it by board or they can do it as a slate vote.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kate Gervais, David Dolan, Dick Williams, and Mary Coppola to add commission as presented in our packet.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Benoit, aye.
Rurciti, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye.
Okay.
Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
Mitch, did you submit a letter of intent?
I did.
Okay.
The chair submitted another one to Beth, I think.
I thought that was the concom, but.
I'm also sitting here, I can tell you that I'm interested.
Right, no, I think, yeah.
I forwarded Mitch's letter of interest to Beth.
That's fine.
That was, it was submitted last time.
I just did, I figured that was what it was.
I think Dan's is in here actually too, I know that he actually submitted about a month ago, so.
All right, so do we have a motion on capital improvement?
I'll make a motion that we accept, um, appointments to the capital improvement planning committee, uh, including Daniel Gracie and Mitch Rissetti. Both for three-year terms expiring twenty twenty-four.
Do we have a second?
Waitman seconds.
Okay.
I, I just have a comment, um, and Mitch, I know you've been on CIPC before. I, and this is something for the board and it will come up for the concom also. Having select board members serve on these appointed boards and commissions apart from the ones that were, were, the boards and commissions are looking for a representative versus, you know, a kind of standalone. Um, I question if that's, I know we haven't had a lot of interest in the boards and commissions recently, but I do question if that, if we're heading down a slippery slope, um, just in general and not specifically, it's just, you know, I'm on a few appointed as kind of the representative from the, the select board. And so I do wonder kind of the board's take on everything, so.
Well, I think we need to be careful because you and Skip will be on concom, so, you know, that's, we gotta be careful that, we certainly couldn't do a third one because I think then it could be.
And I have questions once we get to concom, but that was just because this is the first one, and I, like I said, I know for CIPC Mitch is, was on before you were a select board member and, um, so, but for, I have a question, more questions for concom, I guess, because there's, are, it would be two select board members if I often will join to listen or, or if I have questions or something, does that mean that we then should be posted or not?
No.
Um, but that's for, that's for the concom piece and so, but I wanted to bring my concern up for the CIPC because that's the first point where we have.
I guess my concern, my first consideration would be if there's a lot of interest.
Right.
We'd probably, I'd probably support somebody outside of a board member to try to get more interest from outside. But it's not like we have other people that wrote with interest, so to fill, fill the positions, I guess, that would be my first consideration.
And that was, yeah. Right. It's kind of that, to me, that balance as far as providing an opportunity for additional folks, but also doing the best service to the town to have full boards and commissions, so.
Yeah.
But for CIPC, that was, I wanted to bring it up, my, my bear concerns were for concom because it would be two board members, but we can discuss that at concom. So for CIPC, I think they will motion in a second.
Yeah, so, uh, any other discussion? So roll, roll call.
Benoit, aye.
I'm gonna recuse.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye. Three ayes and a recuse. All right, so.
I'm sorry, can I amend my, my vote? I, I would like to vote aye for Daniel and recuse on myself.
Yeah.
If that's possible. I didn't mean to disrespect Daniel in that way, he's, he's great to work with, so I would just.
I think it's tricky because we took it as a slate, they don't have a link.
Yeah, yeah, well, I just wanna note it in the minutes then, I mean, if you can count the vote however you want to vote, um, that I recused, but support Dan. So, yeah.
All right, next is, uh, conservation commission.
Do you wanna take it separately, or do we have to do it the same way?
I mean, I think we can do it however we want, um, and we've already had a little bit of that conversation. I don't, or do you wanna have a conversation before a motion, or do you wanna?
I, I mean, that's fine, I think we've already had some of the conversations, so we might as well continue if there's concern, um, so that we structure this appropriately to make the motion.
Yeah. I mean, and I don't, we don't have other interest, I mean, there's, we have three openings and we have three folks that are interested. And I was listening to the concom meeting that night and I, the concom, the commission voted unanimously to support these three. I do have concerns as far as the, the number of, um, board, select board members that are on that commission, that it's two. And so if, I, I will sometimes listen, I rarely participate for a lot of discussion, it's sometimes if I have a question or something, but not, um, anything. I want to make sure that we have that basis covered and I also wanna be careful that we're not kind of inbreeding ourselves and only looking at ourselves. Again, I know we don't have additional interest, so.
I, I foresaw this as, as, as one of the topics of a conversation on our roundtable, having some kind of policies as far as some of the committees and choosing. So, I mean, currently, we don't have any policy that restricts it.
Right.
We don't have any other candidates, but if you don't, if somebody doesn't feel that they can support it, that's fine, but I don't think that, you know, there's no, no policy in place to, to.
Right, and.
I think, can I, can I speak as not related to this, because I'm not gonna comment on myself specifically as a board member. But I will say that I think there's some confusion on what, and this came up in RDIC too, what constitutes an open meeting issue or an open meeting in general. For example, when we had finance committee meet, coming up to the budget, and all of us were sitting on the call, we have every right as constituents to sit and listen to a FinCom committee meeting, even if there are more than three of us in attendance, as long as we don't deliberate amongst ourselves on an issue that's going to come before the select board. It's the same with every other board and commission in town, and, um, again, these issues, we have a precedent for this, I mean, I, I, like you're bringing it up now, Leah, but you were also serving on other boards and commissions last year, um, as a member of this board too.
As a representative from this board though, which I think, I mean.
Like the building, like the growth management or that thing?
I was not on growth management.
Because Jeff was on that, we appointed Jeff to that.
And I thought that that was as a select board, I thought we had specifically asked for, for members from, representatives from select board from the different board, from planning, the different boards and commissions, so.
That's fine, I mean, if your concern is that you can't listen into the meeting, I think that's not a valid concern.
No, I think is if it gets into deliberation over a certain issue, they may come to the, the board and then you have two people there and a third person has a comment, then it becomes an issue.
Right.
Right.
So it's gonna be up to that chair of that committee to assure that, that those aren't, those aren't violated and, um, any open meeting law violations aren't. And, you know, they'd have to reschedule it at a time and have a joint meeting or something like that if there's an issue that comes up that would involve more than two members.
If I couldn't just kind of, again, I, I think that that's, again, only if the issue is gonna go to the select board for some discussions at select board level. I can't think of many issues that the conservation board decides on that actually comes to select, and I think it is rare, but there could be a few, but.
We've had none.
I don't think of, I can't think of anything that would come, but, but it could happen.
The ones that I can think of off the top of my head all have to do with conversion of sixty-one A property that has already been before the board of selecting, before it comes to concom and planning and all of those others. But that is an issue that technically could be considered if all members, if, if three select board members took part in that conversation in the concom context, it could be considered an open meeting violation.
Well, it typically doesn't go to the select board first, we ask to get input from all the committees before the select board makes a decision regarding that.
Uh, it is, it has been recent practice that it comes here first to be distributed to all the other committees. And then there's another meeting where you.
Right, but the, the board doesn't make any decisions until we receive responses from the committees, whether they have any issues.
It's not just decisions, any discussion whatsoever about it.
I see what Peter's saying.
I, I see what he's saying too, because you would be discussing it at your meeting and then it's gonna come to our board for us to decide whether we, we wanna do anything with it. That's, but that's been a big issue lately, that we get letters from all the specific depart, um, committees regarding sixty-one A.
And I understand the concern, it's, if I may speak as a, I guess, an applicant versus a board member from the chair instead of making me go back out. I will say that again, I made it very clear at the meeting to the chair of conservation that, um, there's been vacancies on that board for years and those boards sometimes have a hard time making a quorum, I think the topic is interesting. And I only wanted to serve because of that purpose, if they needed somebody, so, I mean, it's, you know, I don't, that was my intent, and so.
Well, and like I said, we've already discussed, there's no other interests at this time, um, and it will be the responsibility of the chair of that committee to assure that no open meeting violations occur during their, their meetings. So, um, do we have a motion for conservation commission?
I'll make a motion for const, um, to accept the appointments for conference, conservation commission for Joe De Laquiva.
Daquila?
Daquila, sorry.
That's okay.
Mitch Rissetti and Scott Lang Landren, Landren.
Landren, yeah.
Waitman seconds, I, I have one more question, comment, if you may.
Okay. Okay, yeah, discussion, yeah.
Um, I know that there's been some, um, one of, I think, Mr. Daquila has been not able to attend some of the meetings in person recently, and I just wanted to make sure that we had talked about the policy where for active participation and everything, and I just wanted to confirm with the chair of concom, since Peter's here, that, that you feel confident that, that Mr. Daquila will be able to, to serve concom whole, wholly.
So to directly answer your question, yes, we believe we will see improved attendance from him.
Yeah.
As a, the whole, I, I was not at the meeting when you discussed it, there is no bylaw for any committee except FinCom, the five consecutive, uh.
I thought it was a policy.
No.
A policy?
I think it's MGL.
Well, it is on certain committees, finance committee has that policy, either to MGL or something, because we just dealt with that issue recently. But I'm not sure all committees have it, but finance specifically does.
But you say it's state as well?
Yeah, I gotta find the MGL, this was looked at before because it's the same issue we had, I mean, we had an issue, for example, with, um, you know, RDIC before we made appointments that that board was unable to meet because they didn't have enough members, um, so they weren't able to do anything. So there, there is some language in MGL that stipulates some of this stuff.
There is, but you also have to be careful because different MGL applies to different committees.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think, that's, I think it's.
Planning has its own, conservation has its own, I, I don't know about all the committees in town and where, and where MGL applies specifically. Which specific MGL sections apply to each committee?
It's definitely not universal, specific committees under, under MGL.
So you, you're upset with that?
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
So, um, roll, roll call.
Benoit, aye.
Uh, Rurciti, recuse.
Waitman, aye with concerns.
And Nichols, aye. All right, council on aging committee.
I make a motion to accept the nominations and appointments for the council on aging for Ben Frost and David Fish. Full members, three-year terms expiring, vote on twenty twenty-four.
Do we have a second?
Waitman, seconds.
Any discussion? All right, roll, roll call.
Benoit, aye.
Rurciti, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, I'll recuse just for, I don't think I have to, but just for. Yeah. All right.
And thank you to everyone for going out and doing it and everything, I mean.
Except me.
No, you included.
I'm just kidding, you're gonna have a hard time, Leah.
All right, um, next on the agenda is discussion of actions on the status of the AdHoc building and the new senior center committee.
We don't, okay, so, through the chair, can I, just, we haven't received any, anything from any of these commission members and they haven't met. So I'm wondering if, have we reached back out to these members to see?
So, so, the committees have never met, that I'm aware of, these two committees.
We appointed.
The first one, I think, the intention was good, I think the facilities management plan kind of eliminated the need for this. Because it was my understanding that this committee was gonna look at buildings, see what their facility needs were, and try to develop some advice to the board select. But now that the facility management plan does, I, I just, I see no need for that, if that in fact was the reason for the, for the meeting. This new senior center, I know there's a lot of interest at that time, uh, to do it, and matter of fact, I think there's forty or fifty grand, some amount to develop.
Money was set aside.
A plan, because we talked about that at the finance committee meeting. I just, truthfully, I don't know, again, unless somebody's talking about doing some kind of override again, is, is there any?
Right, but that was why, why the study was put aside, there was money put aside, I mean, this was a big debate on the town floor.
The study.
I guess my concern is, okay, we set up these committees and somebody's like, oh, they never met, they never, well, who's in charge? I mean, with the three-hundredth committee, you went in and acted as the chair.
And we do.
Nobody made any action, as far as I know, made any, um, move to, to get these meetings going, so.
Right, I feel like it needs.
How is it fair to just say they didn't meet?
I feel like it needs leadership either from us or from the town administrator on behalf of us.
Yeah. Yeah, you can't just point a bunch of people and then you have no chair or nobody leading the committee and then say they don't do anything. And, and, and at least have the courtesy, like, these people should be contacted. Because maybe they're anticipating, because I, I know one member who doesn't even live in town anymore would ask about it all the time, is what's gonna ever happen with the committee? So that's not fair to ask somebody to participate on something and then just kind of drop it and say nobody met.
Can I then, I'll just go ahead and make a motion to have the town administrator's office reach out to the members on these committees and start getting the ball rolling if.
Can I kind of, before you go too far down this road, uh, again, I don't know what the need of the AdHoc building committee is because that meet's already been that. So I don't know, I mean, in, in my opinion, this committee has no purpose anymore that I should just notify them that this has already been done by the facilities management.
But you don't know the exact purpose of it.
But my, again, I was told the purpose of it was to evaluate the facility needs of each building, that was what this was for. My, my, again, I was told the purpose of it was to evaluate the facility needs of each building. That was what this was for. Do you guys remember it differently? Cause that's what I was told.
But it would have been specific on why it was developed. I don't think.
It was developed to determine the needs of the buildings, the facilities.
That's what I was told.
Right, and I think it was in, a little bit in response, correct me if I'm wrong Mitch, with the potential for dispatch to expand and how.
There are a bunch of things, yeah.
The elevator for community hall, you know, so it was kind of encompassing.
Yeah.
Um, I have a question if it would make sense, and this is, it doesn't even necessarily need to be decided tonight in my mind, maybe, but would it be beneficial to. Repurpose that committee to kind of follow along with the side managed plan?
Well, that's what I was thinking, like, make thi- make this part of our already existing committee and ask, at least have the courtesy of asking those individuals that were asked to serve on it. Whether they're interested in serving in another capacity for the same purpose.
I guess, for, I guess for what? What would be the end goal of having that committee? I mean, we already have a facilities management plan and it's not like they're gonna be, what are they gonna be doing with it?
Well, that's where, in my opinion, the cabinet approval committee now has to meld it into a five-year capital, kind of work with them, and then they need to. Start deciding how to move forward each of these. I think that's her role, so that's why I don't know what this.
A lot of the committees that we have that, that haven't been active, some of them, they have. They su- serve dual purposes as some of the other committees in town and I just, I don't, we have a lot of committees and boards. And now that that function has been served, um, I'm not sure that there's a need for that to exist.
I guess my concern is that, okay, we already, we already took care of it, but then why did we ask these poor people to serve on a committee and then just did, went another way and just did it anyway?
So I think the answer to that question is, is that I didn't even know this group existed, so when I came in, I wanted to get, I knew that there was nobody. Looking at the facilities of the town, so I went out and got the grant for this and got it done. But this group had not met, nothing was going on, so I wasn't even aware they existed, so I just went and took care of the problem. And frankly, I think that the way it was taken care of was a lot better than having a group of ad hoc people trying to figure out how to do this. You know, I think it, so I think the way it was handled by somebody who knew building management and could do it. I, I think the building, the senior center is a whole different issue, but this committee, I just don't know what we would do with them at this point. I don't see. How I would give them direction, cause what we wanted done, I think, is for the most part been accomplished.
Can I ask you a quick question?
I, I guess my concern is like going forward that this not happened. I mean, if we, if we set up a committee.
Right.
Then you or somebody has to take the lead because there's, there's nobody there in charge, so you can't fault them to say nobody ever met because it was never.
At least for the first meeting.
A lot of times they don't even know who else is on the committee, because.
Right, who's gonna, it's, why is it anybody's, one, one person's responsibility to step and say, okay, I'm gonna schedule a meeting. It's not, it's ours. To set that, to get it in motion, just like the three hundredth. You need somebody to sit in there and then get the committee set, established and moved.
Have to do it.
In truth, we, just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, I don't fault anybody for this. I'm just bringing it to the attention, we brought it to attention, cause. We were asked about these committees and we realized they never met, so we said, okay, let's put it on the agenda and see what the board selectmen wants to do with it, but.
Yeah.
I'm not, I don't fault these people at all. I think if these people volunteered, I, I give them compliments and kind of enjoy it.
Yeah, and I'm not faulting them at all either, but this must have been on last year's too. They must, they must just have been approved and the people were just, you know.
I'd like to suggest that we figure out what, what was actually they were supposed to do. And make sure that we can close the loop completely, without nothing.
The charge.
Yeah, there's, there are, there are some assumptions.
Yes, so without making assumptions, to build these committees.
Can I ask you a quick question? Sorry to interrupt you. Am I on that list?
We don't know.
You don't know who's on it?
Well, we were given a list last time.
I remember you thinking you were.
Yeah, we, we, we did have, we did have names.
Yeah.
And the staff, I think.
And the purpose was.
Ron's on it.
I'm not sure.
My memory was that the group was a sev- was a, it, it's not, I don't think it's citizens, I think it's staff.
I think there's some citizens on it.
Yeah.
Right.
But the hope was, well, they could have been, somebody from CIPC, but my memory was.
No, there were some individual citizens that weren't on the boards.
But the, the intent was to do what the study did.
Yeah. Yep.
Within house staff.
I just, I'd just like to make sure that we can close the loop completely with that. If there's nothing, that, that, that there wasn't an assumption of further action.
No, 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 I just.
Other than the study, um, and then, because I don't know what it is, I don't think that we're recalling completely, and I'd like the same thing with the senior center.
Well, the, the senior center, truthfully, is a completely different issue, right? The question there is, is your will of the board selectmen? They wanna go forward and try looking to build a new senior center? Is that a need? Does the board wanna do it or not?
I, 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 I have, I have a real problem with bringing it to town meeting and having the residents vote to pursue it. And then the board all of a sudden say, no, we're not interested.
Cause there is that study.
I think the residents spoke, they set aside money. I don't think we should just say, okay, well, let's not even do this.
And if I may, and I don't, with the chair, if I may, I don't remember off the top of my head. I remember a few years ago Becky coming in and talking about. The amount of debt that the town had and that would be coming off and in order to maintain, you know, the best standing. We have a big chunk coming off either this year, next year, in the very near future, um, that we should still maintain a certain percentage of debt.
This year, yeah. Right.
And that with everything coming off in the, in the next couple of years, while the town levy is not good, the, the. Debt is below what we kind of should be at, I think, and I don't wanna necessarily speak on behalf of Becky Lindon, you might remember a little bit from FinCom also.
Yeah.
And so I think there was always in the back of the board's mind, previous boards, is what next? What project could or should be considered to kind of not fill that whole debt bucket back up?
Right.
But to make it so that we're at a place that we still are in healthy debt.
Right, looking at the infrastructure needs and like I said, it was, it was very much debated at the town meeting and, and people.
Right.
Voted to have that done, so I, I personally would have a hard time to just say.
Right.
Well, nobody ever, you spent that money, so that money's still sitting.
Cause there's a committee sitting in, there's nobody there. So, so it's gotta get, it's gotta be moved.
Yeah, nothing's going on. So the board just, and I'm happy to start moving along. The board would like to move forward, to actually do a study upon the needs of. Building a new senior center and having that study completed, at least go that far and then we can look at it after that, is that? Man, that's why I guess I'm looking for a word of the board.
Well, I, I think, I, I would ask that you, like, um. Contact the people that are on the list, see if they're still interested and set up a meeting and set up a board and let them determine what, what. Direction they wanna take it, cause I think that as far as I'm concerned, that decision was already made on the town floor. I don't think this board should be making a decision to take any different action.
And I would ask you to reach out to Becky and confirm.
Here, you, the issue in the debt services, it's at least a couple of years before the debt goes off, but when you, you're correcting that you wanna use. When the debt comes off, you wanna use borrowing for new projects, but not necessarily just create a project to do, you wanna look at what your needs are and tie that need in. So that may be a senior center, that may be a police station, whatever, but the, the benefit of that is that, you know, it's already in your budget structure. So you don't have to raise taxes to fund that debt service amount, so that's the benefit of that, but that, that doesn't go to. Just, just saying, okay, we, we wanna fill that debt with new debt, we, you wanna fill that debt with something you need to, to buy, whatever that might be.
Right, but that, I mean, like I said, that, the interest was already set by the residents.
Well, yeah, well, that, that's, that's why I wanted, I need to know what they wanna do here, because, you know, that, that. The residents set that, how many years ago was that approved? Two or three, four? I mean, how many years ago is this money put aside?
And I think some of the.
Two years ago.
Three, two.
Yeah, two or three years.
I just, I want a pro- product. I don't, we spent forty-five thousand dollars on a fifteen-page water rate study to have a consultant come in and say. Your liabilities don't meet your assets. You know, we spent forty-five thousand dollars on that. We're spending thirty-five.
And that could have been done for free, which I, I told the board that could have been.
Yes, it could have been done for free, but nobody wants to raise ra- rates because it's not politically savvy and the board held off on doing it way too long. But this is another issue. We're spending thirty-five thousand dollars on a study for a building when we're having to cut police overtime. Like this is, it's absurd, the amount of money that we're gonna be spending on a, on a conceptual plan for a facility that's probably at least still a decade, a decade and a half out. And we just went, we went through and talked about the, the issues, the budgets. We're, we're talking about not plowing people's roads, but we're spending thirty-five thousand dollars. On a conceptual study for a building that we can't possibly afford?
Which should have been debated at, at the town meeting, which was, and the residents voted for it, and then the committee should make the decision on whether they wanna go forward.
Right, I think it came out of free cash.
Right, and you'll bring something to a, a town meeting and have the residents vote on it and say, this is what they want, and then all of a sudden say, oh, we really shouldn't spend the money. That money was set aside. By the taxpayers because that's what they felt they wanted.
Okay, I'm sure that if you repoll them now and their streets aren't gonna be plowed, they would say that that was a folly, folly of a choice. I just, I don't think it's fiscally responsible.
I mean, is, does the board have any other issues? Like I said, I personally don't, I don't like taking something that was voted at a town meeting and then discarding it. I don't feel that's, that's my position.
Right, and I know we have a lo- I think we have a number of outstanding town meeting articles that have been funded that kind of have sat and they have boiled up to the pot.
Right.
Something we need to look at, right.
Well, and that's something that we asked for. We want a listing from the accountants, all of that stuff.
Yeah, we gotta talk about that.
Right.
Those are a whole bunch of us.
Yeah, we talked about that, we gotta get it done.
Right.
So that, that, I mean, that's a, a total, another discussion, because we need to take a look at how that, that's being.
But. But I think we need to be mindful as a board of what. The townspeople at town meeting have asked and voted on, and this was. You know, I think there was discussion as to how much money would be needed for the study and they, and the committee at the time or, um, people that. I think Nancy had spoken a little bit about, um, having worked with other senior centers in, in, in the area that.
I think there was, there was some, some informational, you know, you know, they asked for information, but there's never been the committee meeting.
Right. Correct.
So the committee might meet and say, okay, I don't think it's feasible, I don't wanna do it.
Right.
Or it's not enough money, but it's never even been addressed.
Right. Right.
Which is my, my concern. So they very well, well may say, well, no, we don't think it's feasible to do a, do a new senior center, or we don't wanna spend the money to do. A review, but that's up for the committee. If the committee decides not to do it, I have no problem with that. I don't think this board should, should have something that goes to a. Town meeting that was voted on by the residents, all of a sudden just say, well, we don't think we should do it.
Yeah, we, we can bring it back to special and present the options. I mean, the money hasn't been spent yet. And we might be able to add in an additional police officer, or we might be able to do better plowing in the winter, that money's reality.
So why don't we go back on all these ones that weren't, were paid, and we'll go through all of them and say, okay, we'll bring all these back and, and. Not do them. We have, we have a lot of outstanding ones that have never been addressed.
Right, I don't know, many of these are right.
Right.
I'm just, I, I, okay, we spent three thousand dollars a page on our water and sewer study, which is a sweet gig, by the way. I, I just, paying all this money for studies and individual parcels after we just had a facility study done.
I mean, I, my, my, my opinion is the time for debate is prior to approval, not after the fact. So that's something that, that is debatable, but it should have been done prior to being presented and approved at the town meeting.
Should have been done three years ago when they did this, is what they should have did. I know they did, I don't know, but it should have been done years ago.
So.
We're in a different financial spot than we were three years ago.
We've been in this situation for the years. We've been cutting budgets for as long as I've ever been involved in the town at all. So yeah, we're in a difficult situation and there are cuts going on, but. Like I said, um, it's up to, it's up to the board if they have, wanna make any other motion other than the fact of.
I mean, I think the committee should, like Linden said, meet and look at all the options and then see, you know, what makes sense and what doesn't and. Like I said, I asked that Becky be consulted also and with Ron and everything, just so that we get, and a little bit of this, that long-term financial. Impact also, but obviously there's a cost to it, but also what's the benefit? What's the long-term? Needs of the current building versus a new versus upgrades to the current, and I think that that was part of that committee's plan, was whether it made sense to build. New entirely, whether it made sense to upgrade the existing space, whether it made sense, whatever. So that was my understanding.
Okay.
I made your will, if you want me to set up the meeting, I'll do whatever you guys wanna do.
I would like to go back to suggesting that we pull out the minutes or whatever was, whenever these were formed, what was their, um, purpose? What was, what were they there for? Who, then we can speak directly to those people to reiterate, this is what you've done.
Alright.
Or, and then if we have to say, you know, if it was just to do the study that now has been done through a grant, we say, thank you very much, close the committee. I mean, as far as I know, it's still an open committee, whether they've met or not, cause apparently we don't have a five meeting. And then, um, the senior center, I don't know. I, I agree a lot with what Linden was saying and I'll just say this too about the senior center, you know. There's nobody more passionate about balancing the budget, but if you, if you were a senior who hasn't had a child in the school systems for a long time. You know, what's, what's forty thousand dollars compared to the school budget? And I think they want attention. And it's always gonna be that way, but I think that's where some of the seniors are coming from, so.
I understand that, but we, we live in a society where the seniors get benefit from living in the society as well, whether or not they have children. To blame the children in the school system.
Yeah, I blame the children in the school system, I'm just saying equity.
Alright, so I guess the motion would be then, if I can articulate it, you know, I'm hearing what you're saying, Carol, is we wanna see the charges for both boards.
Yes.
Before we make a further decision on how to handle the issue, and I'm, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Wait one second.
Any other discussion?
Just, just if board members have any idea when these things occurred, send me an email about what year or whatever, just so that when I ask Beth, we have an idea as to. How to look this stuff up. We're looking three years ago, five years ago.
Could get it from Anita.
Just a, some timetable to work with that's reasonable.
Cause Anita keeps a list of committees and everything, right? So she probably has dates.
Yeah, let's check with her, she may, she may have something, yeah.
Dates of it, yeah.
Yeah, just gotta, just don't wanna have her spend five years, but you guys think that both of these issues were within the last three years?
Yeah, I think so.
I think it was.
Maybe they could do a search, John.
It was definitely while I was on the board, so that was, this was my fourth, going through my fourth year, and I think it was while Mitch was on the board, so that would be the three years, so.
Within the board for now, so about three years.
Okay.
Yeah, it's probably two, three years ago. We'll, we'll try to dig it out. We have sure we can figure a way to dig it out and see what it says.
Alright, coming up on nine o'clock.
Okay, so, so, alright, so all in favor? Roll call?
Benoit, aye?
Recuse.
Waitman, aye.
Okay, Nichols, aye? Alright, um, Purple Heart Community, I know we, um, this has come up in the past, um. The request to make, um, Rutland a Purple Heart Community, um. So, um, did you have any involvement in this?
Yeah, I thought we already voted this to be, to be in effect, to be honest with you, about a year and a half ago. I was confused to be honest, it came up.
It's never been signed on, it's not. Really?
Yeah, so.
I definitely remember we talked about it and I, I don't know if we voted or if we needed additional information, um, but I remember that we, that we.
We did.
Were definitely conceptual, at the very least conceptually in favor of it, and I honestly cannot remember if we voted on it if we'd asked for additional information.
So, just to be safe, I don't think it hurts to, to just vote on it now. Um, if you'd like me to read it and then I'll make a motion for the board to sign it.
Yeah, that's fine, and, and just so that you know, so this is to make the, a Purple Heart Community. There's also an estimate of the cost of the signs, which I think we might have to address that it's, and obviously we don't have funding right now.
Yeah.
For that, so we'll have to look at that, but we do have an estimate for the cost of the signs at some point.
Mr. Chairman, who is Karen Greenwood? Was she an old veteran?
She was the VSL for the town.
Years ago? So this was, I mean, that's what I was trying to understand. Okay, cause that estimate was made to her, so this estimate.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
Right, she's still, she's very active in town in many committees and things.
But this was never done, obviously, cause we don't have any signs in town, so even though she had an estimate some time ago.
Well, this came up right before COVID hit, so some of this might have gotten lost in the shuffle a little bit.
Okay, this is.
And, and Beth confirmed that the, um, invoice cost still stands.
This was February twenty twenty, the print date of this, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, um. So whereas the people of Rutland, Mass. with great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the citizens of our community who have selflessly served in the armed forces. That has been vital in maintaining the freedom and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas citizens of our community have been killed in action while serving in the armed forces. They've been posthumously awarded the Purple Heart for their ultimate sacrifice, and whereas citizens of our community have been awarded the Purple Heart for their bodily sacrifice. Of being wounded by the hand of the enemy while engaged in combat, and whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest American military decoration. Was created as the badge of military merit, made of purple cloth in the shape of a heart with the word merit sewn upon it. On August seventh seventeen eighty-two in Newburgh, New York by General George Washington, then reestablished as the Purple Heart. On February twenty-second nineteen thirty-two by General Douglas MacArthur. And whereas the heritage it represents is sacred to those who know the price paid to wear the Purple Heart. And whereas August seventh is nationally recognized as Purple Heart Day, now therefore be it proclaimed, we the Rutland Board of Selectmen. Hereby proclaim Rutland, Massachusetts a Purple Heart Community, honoring the service and sacrifice of those from our community who were awarded the Purple Heart. While serving in our nation's wars and also be it proclaimed that Rutland, Massachusetts will recognize August seventh annually as Purple Heart Day. And urge our citizens and organizations to display, uh, the American flag as well as other public expressions of recognition of our Purple Heart recipients. Make a motion that the board signs as written.
Do we have a second?
Waitman, seconds.
Any discussion? Play roll call?
Benoit, aye?
City, aye.
Waitman, aye.
Nichols, aye? So we have a, actually the original draft we did, be signed by the board. Alright, um, the next thing, next, actually, the next two couple of items were the Zoom policy meeting and general meeting guidelines and policies. Um, how, how much longer do we have the, the Zoom access?
Well, they, remember, it expired and then the governor put in a new extension of that. I don't have the date for how long that extension is going on. There's a lot of towns questioning if they should make this a permanent policy or not, to have Zoom meetings, but there's no requirement to have Zoom meetings. This is an option of the board selectmen if they wanna do it or not.
We voted to renew it, the subscriptions.
Well, you guys had talked originally to, oh, the, the actual key.
What was the key?
Yeah, yeah.
So, so, you know, that's gonna give you a year. So, so, you know, that's going to give you a year if you want to have Zoom meetings for a year. But I guess the question of policy is, is that for just the Board of Selectmen? Is it for all towns? How do you want to develop a policy that relates to what you want available with Zoom? Because as you know, there's additional staff that has to do the Zoom meeting and all that stuff and, you know, who, who is required to do it? And I think the Board of Selectmen has made it clear to me that they would like to continue it.
Right, and I, and I think the reasoning that we thought it was a good investment is because it allowed access for residents in, in you know, almost any location they are and they, you know, like I said, I, I would listen on my phone all the time to meetings and it didn't matter. I didn't have to be at a meeting in order to try to keep up to date with, with, with what was going on with it. I guess the concern is that, um, if there's no consistency, um, and if somebody wants to have a Zoom meeting, all of a sudden they don't have a Zoom meeting, and there's, there's the appearance that they're doing it because they don't want to discuss something in an open forum, that becomes a problem. So that's, I think that was the reason that we felt it was is something that we should discuss to have some kind of a policy, because I don't think that people should just be able to use it at the discretion and, like I say, I don't think that's being very transparent, um, and it can easily be misused. And why certain meetings aren't, aren't publicly available and other ones are, um.
That's, that Mr. Chairman, I, I think I'm fine with whatever the board decides, but it does mean additional resources and stuff if you have, everybody has Zoom meetings. So I don't know if you want to decide on certain key committees or.
Well, I mean, like I say, the, the three hundredth, um, committee, they have Zoom meetings, but a lot of our, like, department, like, committees that work more directly with our departments and stuff aren't, aren't having, like, the Bylaw Committee doesn't have Zoom meetings or they're not.
Yes, we most certainly do.
You do? Do you have, and are you on cable?
No, we are not broadcast on cable.
Why, why is that?
Because in the middle of a Tuesday, it's hard to find staff to run the TV station.
Right, so and I think that's my concern is the middle of a Tuesday is, is much harder for somebody to participate in a meeting, so, I, I mean.
But we also have recordings of every meeting.
Right, but do you have, do you have written minutes?
We also have some very limited written minutes.
Now, now that's, that, when we're looking at policies and things like that, like, I've never known that you could not, you could have a meeting and not have minutes available to the public.
He's right, they're required.
Required to have written meeting, meeting minutes.
And we're taking care of that.
Well, no, why, why is it not always been, I mean, you didn't just start, start this committee, so why is there not meeting minutes?
Because it was our impression that the recording of the meeting was sufficient. The whole meeting is recorded, not posted. The, the entire meeting.
Right.
All of it, from beginning to end, the entire recording's online.
Yeah, but that's, that's not the same as having, it, it, I believe it's required, isn't it, Ron, to have written minutes?
You know, I, I, the answer to your question, I think, is yes. It, it always has been required to have written meetings. Now, I don't know if recording meetings is allowed to compensate for that.
Well, I guess my concern.
Right, under open meeting law, it says that you're required to have meeting minutes.
Isn't our town clerk on your, on your committee?
Yes, she is.
So, I would think she would know.
Anyone even has to have printed meeting minutes.
But anybody can.
They just have printed.
But somebody can make a written request for copies of that.
Right.
It doesn't have, it, and, and if they want it in, in written form, it has to be in written form.
I agree.
Okay, Karen?
I've been asking since April for access to those voice minutes for the Bylaw Subcommittee, and I keep being told it's being worked on, it's being worked on. Um, and I have yet, I looked even this evening and not get into those voice reports.
That's because Microsoft changed something without telling us. I, I understand you don't care. I'm just offering an explanation
I don't care. But that means.
For those who don't know.
But that means to the public, we cannot get to those.
The town clerk's office is aware and is working on it, is all I can say at this instant.
Okay, so then, like I said, this is why there needs to be consistency and policies in place, because I think everybody should be operating, um, the same way, because anybody should be able to have access to any information that, that, that the town has.
Agreed. The, the minutes don't have to be detailed. They can be, you know, very summary of the issues, but their, their, the law says they're required to have minutes of the substance of the meeting, what the substance of it was. Now, it doesn't have to be verbatim, but the general substance has to be there, so.
And I think votes.
I agree that all committees should have minutes.
Any votes taken need to be documented, I think. Any votes taken need to be documented.
Yeah, there was also a requirement that those meetings be approved in some reasonable amount of time, because you know, board votes, you know, they rate the minutes, then it's got to come back for the board to approve them. But that's also spelled on open meeting law that, you know, there's a certain time period where the minutes are supposed to be approved by boards and commissions. So I'll have to look at the open meeting law and spell that out. Sounds like I need to send a letter to all the boards and commissions again about open meeting law and specific requirements of minutes. Cause it sounds like there's a few boards and commissions that are not following this thing, the open meeting law.
I have a que, is the question about the policy for Zoom, whether or not to continue offering, allowing boards and commissions to meet remotely via Zoom? Is that the discussion on this or?
Well, I think there's got to be some consistency on the policy. Like I said, we, we should decide if certain, if certain committees are going to use Zoom, and if there's, if they're going to use it, there should be some consistency. I don't think they should just decide they're not going to use Zoom for some meetings, cause then it gives the impression that they're not being transparent, so.
And I guess I operate on the side, if I may, sorry.
Sure.
I operate on the side of almost all boards and commissions should be utilizing Zoom to the, to the best that they can, even if it's their meeting in person, but offering it as an opportunity for the public to be able to zoom in. More and more of public are not having cables, so, and, and YouTube is hit or miss also sometimes, so just a, an additional option to have the meetings available to the public in real time
Sure.
and be able to participate as a commentator or questions or something.
Right. Well, I mean, that, that was like, as we discussed about, we wanted to continue with Zoom, is for that purpose, is for that access.
Are we looking for a motion?
Well, I think we have to decide how this is going to be addressed. I don't know if we want to just have Ron review the policies and, and, and the use of, of Zoom.
So, let, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of comments here, right? So, let's be clear, under state law, state law, there's no requirement that any meeting use Zoom, right? This is a, the policy decision of Board of Selectmen if they want to make a Zoom available to, to all meetings and that they, policy is that everybody has to do Zoom all the time. That could be the policy if the Board of Selectmen chooses to do it, or they can decide certain key committees to do Zoom. What I think the chair is correct is it shouldn't be part-time Zoom, part-time not, at the discretion of some chair, which I think is right. And that, that gives the appearance that they're trying to hide something. Now, if you have a small, minor commission, you know, let's say, not to be offensive to say the historical commission, you know, I don't think they have to be on Zoom, where I think the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, or key meetings are more, better for Zoom than some of these smaller type committees. But that would have to be a policy you guys develop, because those committees are not required to use Zoom. So, again, that, that's a policy decision you guys need to make.
We have boards and committees that don't even fall under our purview, and that's going to be their decision to make. Planning Board, Finance Committee, um, we have no authority over these boards.
Board of Health.
Board of Health.
The elected.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, I don't think that they, they meet as frequently as a, a board, but, um, yeah, I, I mean, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion and then the town administrator provides us with a copy of existing policies, and if we want to make changes, we can make changes. Um, I'll go ahead and make that motion and I'll just add the caveat that I'm in favor of all of the boards that fall under our purview having Zoom access, um, simply to the points that we talked about earlier. It is easier. I also know though that there's also, and this is something Ron can provide us, there's, as part of that, the changing of when the declaration of emergency was lifted, um, uh, there are certain requirements we still have to meet. Like this board needs a quorum in person, even if we offer Zoom.
Mm-hmm.
I would imagine it would be the same with the rest of the boards.
Mm-hmm.
But for public access purposes, I, I'm in favor of it. So I'll go ahead and make that motion that Ron provide us with an updated copy of policies and procedures, and then we can, we can make that decision.
So, do we, well, do we have a second?
So, Mr. Chairman. I guess second first.
Wait one second.
So I'm not sure that those policies even exist so far.
Well, if they don't, just bring it back to us and say they don't.
Okay, cause, cause this is something I think boards and committees are just starting to deal with. Do they want to have these kind of policies? What I'll do is I'll send a letter out to all the town managers asking if anybody's dealt with this and has created a policy on this, but I'm not sure there's a lot of ground in terms of policies on this particular issue as of yet.
I, I guess as a minimum, I'd like to see that and, and, and offer it to all committees, but if they're going to use it, they're going to use it. If they're not going to use it, they're not going to use it. I don't think it should be um, at their discretion. It's either their meetings are provided Zoom access or they're not. I don't think it should be random.
Right. If we have the authority to dictate that.
Well, we have the authority because we own the Zoom account, and if they want to utilize it, then they would have to abide by our policies.
No, but I'm, what I'm saying though is that if we have the authority to tell them, they have to, because according to.
No, I didn't say that we have to, to tell them they have to use Zoom. They leave the, the option. If they want to have their meetings have access to Zoom, then, then they would have to have all meetings access to Zoom. It's not at their discretion.
No, but again, I don't think we, we have to make sure that we have the authority to say that, because we're talking about something that's dictated by the Attorney General's office, and we can't, if there, if that's an additional encumbrance on a border commission that's outside of state law, then I'm not sure we have the authority to do it.
Just from, if I may, the guidance from January, um, June fifteenth says that the Attorney General encourages public bodies to also provide public acts, pub, public with option to view meetings remotely. And, but the legislature is still actively considering expanding or extending what terminated regarding, um, our requirement to do. So we're not required, we're encouraged, but we may be required once again, if, if they actively do that.
Right. Right.
So, uh, to your point, I don't think there is one. I think there's an encouragement to do it and, um.
And like I said, my point wasn't to require a committee to do it, but if they're going to participate in, in any kind of a program, then there's a policy in place saying, okay, so you're having Zoom access, then you're expected that you're going to provide that access on all meetings.
So, so the chair makes what I think is a very good point, right? The very good point is you can't have Zoom meetings when it's convenient for your community to have it, because you want people to hear it, and not convenient, not as a means of it's not convenient, because you don't want to have people hear what you have to say. So I think it makes a good point. How to work that out, I don't know. I guess I would say, I'll look at the issue, I'll try to see what's out there. I do just want to acknowledge that this is early and there may not be a heck of a lot to look at.
Mm-hmm.
But whatever I can find, I'll provide back to you, and we could try to make some policy for whatever I find.
I have another question quickly, um, and this is maybe for Peter and Paul for cable. For the Zoom meetings that are recorded and not able, because in instances that cable's not available to actually be there, are all of those meetings, the, can all of the meetings that are held on Zoom be recorded and put on the YouTube channel for any public body to access? I know most are, but I don't know that every single last one is, and if that could be something that maybe the board looks towards saying, eh, we're recording Zooms and then they're every Zoom, every meeting, whether even if it's a five-minute silly meeting, it's recorded and it's put on YouTube, it takes some of the pressure off of cable to not, to the meetings that you can't make, or if they're double booked or triple booked or whatever, but just to, if you're using, anybody that's using Zoom and hopefully it's at whatever level is recorded and made available for public also.
Well.
I've always been informed that the written word is the official record, and that what is recorded here is not considered to be the official record of the meeting, okay? Even though it does go from start to finish, as far as I was, I was told over the years that the minutes that were taken by the secretary was the official word.
Right. And that, that's, that was.
And I guess I'm, I'm thinking, I was kind of breaking it up into the Zoom policy and then not specifically the minute policy and everything, so I guess, yeah.
Right. Right. All right, so yeah, if you can look at that one. So I guess we have a, a motion on the table, which is basically just to have Ron review it and come back to the board, so if there's not any further discussion, let the roll call vote.
Benoit, aye.
Recite.
Wait, man, aye.
Nickel's aye. All right.
If I may, just add a little, I know the vote's taken, but just to understand the current status of the law with the special legislation passed twenty-four hours too late for the emergency declaration to be ended, no in-person in local, in locus is required for any member of any board. They can be completely remote, one hundred percent. No quorum required, no chair required in person.
That's not the last law that I read, Peter, so.
That, that's.
You're explaining to me something that must have been gone on his on vacation, because that's not what it said prior to being on vacation. Matter of fact, it was very clear that members had to, most of the members, the quorum of the members had to be in person, that's what.
There was special legislation that the, that the governor signed, like, uh, I have to remember the date now, because the emergency declaration ended on the fifteenth of July, and in the night of the sixteenth, the governor signed the special legislation that pretty well carried on all of the remote options for meeting, which expire regardless of April one or April thirty, twenty twenty-two, I think.
Twenty twenty-six.
So we can just get clarification on that, that's what we had.
Right, so that could be part of your, part of your.
Yeah, I'll look at it. I gotta, I gotta look at all of that, but I'll, I'll get through the information. But I gotta look at it too.
All right, um, moving on, the crumbling foundations.
All right, last issue, this is something that's been percolating, again, no pun intended, uh, for, uh, the past several months, and it was brought to my attention. Um, as many of you are aware of the issue Connecticut is facing, um, with the mineral deposits and concrete that were used for home foundations in the nineties to early two thousands, um, those foundations are now crumbling, um, homeowners insurance does not cover that expense. The state of Connecticut set up an emergency fund to help homeowners offset, um, the costs incurred. It's about a hundred thousand dollars to replace a foundation on a traditional home. Um, that issue has made its way into Rutland, um, into some of the surrounding communities. Um, Senator Gobi has been kind of leading the fight in Massachusetts to provide resources and clarity and information, um, regarding this. We had a couple constituents in town, this has already happened to, uh, that I've been in contact with, as well as Senator Gobi. Um, as of right now, the testing for the issue is reimbursed to the homeowner, but there's no further reimbursement available in the state. There is legislation right now in front of the House, or the legislature, uh, to kind of push these things along, uh, so I wanted to bring this to the board's attention. Ron and I had talked about this and I had briefed you on it when you, um, uh, took over the King's seat, and, um, what I think would be good is if we write a letter of support, um, concerning our constituents to advocate, um, for, uh, the legislative process and providing relief to those citizens. I'm more than happy to take that on. Um, I do know from communications with Senator Gobi, um, with the constituents in question, the state geologist is now involved with the process to identify where, uh, the concrete could have come from. Um, the original thought, uh, initially, because it impacted a certain mile radius around the quarry in Connecticut, um, is that there might other, there may have been other quarries, uh, closer to Massachusetts that were impacted, which obviously would have a huge impact on our constituents moving forward, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, through you, and I, I gotta remember the details here, because I talked about it with the chair, the prior chair, some time ago. I believe it's the town of Charlton, Massachusetts. If you look on their website, they have a whole page designed to this issue, because there was a house in Charlton that this occurred at, so they developed a whole webpage to this, uh, this, this issue, explained to residents about that, and, and the former chair is corrected, uh, there is no money currently amassed to deal with this issue. Senator Gobi, in an email she sent me, was on vacation, I read it today and I gotta look at the details, but this is one of the issues that she addressed. She'd like to do, eventually do a public hearing in Rutland, explain this issue, because she's the chairwoman of the committee that's dealing with this issue, so she's very, very knowledgeable. She's the champion on this, and she wants to eventually have some kind of public hearing to explain to people. But, you know, as we look at this, one of the things I'm going to have to look at is look at the Charlton website, and I, I ask you guys to look at it, to see what it says, but I can work, and I think I did have a conversation after Mitch had brought this forward to me with the, the, uh, town administrator of Charlton asking about this issue, and we can use the information on his website and transfer it to our website to, to educate people. We had thought maybe this is one of two houses in Rutland, but this could, as I understand it, expand beyond those one or two houses, and it'd be a significant number of houses in town. And we're talking about effectively a homeowner who might have a four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand value home, being reduced to almost nothing because of this, so it's a very significant issue to those homeowners. Um, so I think it, we have to look at it seriously and, and as we hear from residents, we need to do what we can to support them with, obviously, we don't have local dollars to do it, but with Senator Gobi and state resources to see if we can deal with this issue, but, uh, I think the chair, the former chair is correct in saying this is an up and coming issue that we all need to be aware of, because it could be very, very hot, very, very fast, as more and more houses discover that this is a problem.
Yeah. Any questions?
Can I get a, a motion to, uh, have Mitch draft a letter of support?
Wait, I make a motion to have Mitch draft a letter of support, um, regarding the crumbling foundations to Senator Gobi and the, the state.
I'm going to hold on for a moment, so. Signing that again? I'm, I'm sorry, this.
We voted to sign it pending.
Oh, we're gonna sign it? Um, we'll wait until, we'll talk about that after, I'm gonna finish that.
Sorry, I, so I made, I made a motion to, um, authorize Mitch to draft a letter in support of the crumbling foundation cause to Senator Gobi and the rest of the state to, for advocacy at the state level.
Second.
Second, okay. Any other discussion?
No, and this is a huge issue, I just, um, want to bring to the board.
It's, yeah, no.
I, I mean, it's been going on in Connecticut for some time, I followed it back then.
I think most of us have been following it, kind of, there's a house, I think, in Holden that's having their foundation repaired,
Same issue, yeah.
like, redone and stuff, so I think a lot of us have been following it individually. So I think it's important that the board take a, a proactive stance, so thanks for getting it on the agenda.
One quick, just curiosity, is this, was this an additive or something that naturally is occurring?
No. It's my understanding, and I can't, I, I, I know what the name of it is, but I can't pronounce it.
It starts with a P H, something, yeah.
It's terrible, yeah. Um, and it, if you look at the map, the geological map, and, and Ann's committee put together a lengthy report on the issue, which you can download off the state's website. Um, the mapping tool, the mineral itself, Ron, occurs naturally in quarries that come right through central mass all the way down to Connecticut. Uh, so I think, not to make any assumptions, it's just, it looks like there could be an issue that, that's close to here. It's my understanding it's a natural occurring mineral. There was no, in Connecticut, for example, they, they narrowed it down to most of the issue came out of one quarry and one concrete supplier. Um, they were not held liable for damages. I mean, I think that they went out of business beforehand anyway. Um, but I don't think, I get the impression from reading the report, there was no maliciousness or knowledge of this potentially occurring on behalf of either the building community or the folks mining out of the quarry. Yeah.
Good, thank you.
It's the aggregate.
I'm sorry?
The word you're looking for is aggregate, the, the natural occurring stone to make the concrete.
No, the specific mineral itself, though, has a name, because of P H Y or something like that, that, yeah. Does that make sense, Joe? Because I know you're probably pretty knowledgeable with that process.
Yeah, and concrete is, that industry in particular has a lot of controls and, and, you know, reams of lab work written and all kinds of testing done constantly, so. Yes.
Sorry.
All right.
So we have a motion.
And a second.
And a second.
Why, these two seconded it.
Oh, I motioned.
Did you second that, Carol?
I did.
She did, yeah.
She did, girl.
I thought you helped, I was a little bit crazy, but.
All right, we'll do a, a roll call.
Benoit, aye.
Or City Aye.
Wait, man, aye.
Nichols, aye. I'm sorry, Mitch, so on, on the, on the alcohol, on the, for the three hundredth, for the Beer Garden, we're not going to sign this yet until we get a.
You said to me that the board was gonna sign it, subject to the insurances.
Contingent on it. But we'll actually sign it now or not?
But they won't get it, they won't get a copy of it until, you know, the insurances are okay.
Okay.
So if you sign it, they're not going to get that signed version until the insurances are okay.
Or we can stop off.
I just wanted to make sure.
You can, yeah.
I found this in my packet, it's not on our agenda specifically, sorry. I don't know if, it's an email about a, a hotspot for the Wood Studio. I don't see it on our agenda specifically, but it was in my packet, so I wasn't sure if.
I read that, too. Who was asking for that?
My computer does.
Mike Moriarty, yeah, I'm not sure. I think that's on behalf, I actually saw that email, I think that's probably on behalf of the three hundredth anniversary committee who wants to meet in the Woods Building, probably doesn't have a hotspot in there to work on.
Well, I think.
I, that was my guess from reading the email.
I think more and more, to be honest, I think it's probably maybe coming from the three hundredth, but as more and more groups are starting to meet back in person, the Wood Studio is a hotspot for meetings, especially some of the smaller boards and commissions. And if we're pushing for Zoom access, I think that it's not specific to any specific board and commission, but as a meetings facility for, um, other groups.
So I would say this to you, I don't know if there's funding, it's forty dollars and twenty-three cents a month. I would have to check with our IT staff and CM Geeks to see if they have funds that they could do this with it. I don't know, there's no budget, there was no money specifically budgeted for this, but there is money budgeted for IT services, so if they have the funds, we can create one, but I don't know if they have or not.
Yeah.
So I, I think that's something that Ron can address.
That's fine, I just, it was in my packet and I didn't see it on the agenda, so.
So you stole her copy, Ron, it should be in your packet.
Yeah, I had, I had it somewhere, so.
Is there anything else?
The only other thing that we're gonna meet next week, um, for the town administrator, mid-year review, and then we're gonna have the roundtable, so I talked to Carol, and I'm gonna have her pretty much kind of moderate, since she didn't do a review, just so that nobody kind of like, it's not, it doesn't lean towards my opinion or your opinion or anything else, so she'll kind of moderate the discussion regarding the review, um, for that part of it. So, that's set up. And then I, I've asked Beth to try to keep just kind of a, a note on the upcoming meeting, so that we're all kind of aware of the, the next coming.
You're gonna do, sorry, interrupt the chair, water and sewer first that night, then?
Yeah, we're gonna do that at five thirty, it's gonna be a separate meeting, and then we're gonna have our other meeting at six. And it's just gonna, it's, um, nothing else is on the agenda, it's just gonna be the committee. Um, I'm not gonna have any outside discussion or anything else, it's gonna just be in-house discussion. All right, if we don't have anything else, if I can get a, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
And roll call?
Benoit, aye.
Or City Aye.
Wait, man, aye.
And Nichols, aye. Thank you.